Thank you. Welcome to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, November 10, 2025, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. Notice of this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. Ask everybody to rise and play their lead. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held on December 3, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamal.
Mr. Alpert?
Yeah.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffeter?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Nobrin?
Present.
Mr. Walks?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waino?
Present.
Chairman Bagow?
Present. Thank you. We have two resolutions. First resolution is PB 25-08 Turtleback Zoo Post-Stock Barn Draft Resolution. I make a motion that we recommend to the Town Council. This is consistent with the master plan and with recommendations as annotated. Do I have a second?
So moved, Mr. Trump.
Vice Chairman seconds. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none on the motion?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Nobrin?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffeter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes. Resolution passes. Mr. McGovern, would you send that to the Town Council, please? PB 25-03 Canter-9 Schindler Terrace Draft Resolution. This is for deck expansion. I make a motion that we adopt PB 25- we memorialize PB 25-03 Canter-9 Schindler Terrace Draft Resolution. Do I have a second? Mayor's seconds. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none on the resolution.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Nobrin?
Yeah.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffeter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. Mr. McGovern, would you swear in the township professional, please?
Okay, for both parties.
For the fourth round housing element.
Miss Grill and Miss Adam. Is Megan going to speak at this?
Oh, she might as well.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
West Orange Township Fourth Round H-E-F-S-P Draft, MBPB-4th Round Affordable Housing Plan Infrastructure Concerns Draft, October 2025, West Orange H-E-F-S-P, with appendices, October 25 Addendum, West Orange H-E-F-S-P. And Susan Grill? You're up. Come to the microphone, please.
I'm gonna trip over my old bag, which is not unusual. I'm so clumsy. Um. Hello, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members and council and, uh, and public. I know I recognize a number of you from the last time I was here. And I'd just like to, as you recall, our firm prepared a draft of the Fourth Round Housing Element Fair Share Plan. In October, we had a, this board had a public hearing on that plan, that draft, and there were a number of comments. As anyone that was here recognized that, um, we took that back. The Planning Board asked us to, um, go back, consider the comments, and we did, and we have come back with a revision to that plan. That plan has been, as far as I know, been on file. There's also a summary of the changes. I am going to just highlight the key elements of that. And those go to removing 762, Mount Pleasant, I'm sorry, Pleasant Valley Way site, removing that as a site, and replacing that with 217 Main Street. In addition to that, we also added an accessory apartment program that would be able to be utilized within the community up to, at least until the program is proven to be successful, up to 10 accessory units that would be able to be converted, existing carriage houses or garages into affordable housing units. That was also something that was discussed. As a result, there's a slight difference in the calculation. The total units were revised from 220, 21 units to 230 units. And, and essentially, we also added a little bit about, um, some of the sites, but essentially, that is it. That is what we did. Again, we listened to the public and we revised the plan accordingly. We are now at a point where the longer this goes on, frankly, the worse it gets from the, for the township. But I would note, though, that a plan, a housing plan like this, can always be revised. It happens all the time, and particularly in light of the Affordable Housing Fourth Round. I think many municipalities will be revising their housing plan to address things as it goes on. This, this, um, this timeframe is very aggressive, and so it is important to get something on the books adopted. But again, I just want to assure everybody that that doesn't mean that it's now locked in stone and it can't be revised. I would also note that ideally, if the Planning Board adopts this tonight, that it then goes to the council for an endorsement, endorsement of the plan. And then ultimately, as in every instance with master plans and ordinances, the, um, the plans are implemented through ordinances, and that is within the jurisdiction of the council. And that would occur as the next step. So I hope that that gives a little bit of framework as to what the next steps are. And that's all I have to say. I'm not gonna, there's not much to provide in terms of more than that. That is exactly what the differences are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask our Township Engineer, Ms. Carballo, do you have any questions or comments about this? And we'll have to sway you in if you don't.
Do you want to come over here? Do you want to come on me? Okay.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do swear.
Thank you.
So as per the last meeting that we had in the Planning Board, I was asked to look at the, uh, affordable housing and how does this affect our infrastructure. So I actually drafted a memo for the Planning Board. And in there, I actually explained some of the limitations that do currently exist with our infrastructure, especially when it comes to our sanitary and storm sewers. In regards to the sanitary understorm, um, as one of my recommendations would be for the township to create a stormwater utility as well as a sanitary sewer utility authority in the township in order to be able to maybe sustain the improvements that will come in the future, actually for the repairs, maintenance, and whatever it might be feasible to enlarge the current system that we have, and also to map it as part of our requirements with the stormwater, um, DP rules. Even though the joint meeting of Essex and Union County does have capacity to handle the additional flow, the township doesn't know exactly what we have, or whether or not we have enough capacity existing to, I would say, handle the additional development that will be created with the Fourth Round of Affordable Housing. So it will be the responsibility of the township to increase, or as I will say, provide adequate, uh, capacity for future development. Okay? I did provide in my memo, um, there's approximately 5 million gallons per day that the, uh, joint meeting of Essex and Union County is capable of handling. And for future growth, basically, we will have to do a study, which we don't have right now, basically an asset management plan for everything that is for the storm and the sanitary, and also conduct a hydraulic analysis to actually figure out which areas don't have capacity, which areas can be improved, and whatever that might be feasible, and how in the future the township is going to be able to sustain these improvements. That's about it, what I have on my, uh, report. I also talked about, I believe, the traffic. Obviously, there's going to be a generation of more vehicles on the road, um, especially since we have Route 8280 as well as Route 10. In regards to the water, we are not the purveyors of the, uh, water. That's actually handled by New Jersey American Water, and the same thing with the electricity and the gas. So in terms of the infrastructure, it's definitely something that the township is gonna have to, uh, develop a management plan as well as, you know, discuss this in the future with the Board of Education since it will increase definitely the number of, um, students that will be going to our schools, as well as, you know, additional traffic congestion that might be produced by all this development.
Thank you. But thank you. Um, Mr. Alpert has a question for you.
Sure. Does anyone else before me? All right, I had a couple for you. Um, later in your report, in your memo, you mentioned there's a couple, there's sections of the township that are known for sewer backups during severe rainfalls.
Yes.
Uh, can you tell us where those are?
I would say that's probably the area of San Cloud. Um, there is a sewer main trunk that actually parallels the, uh, roadway river. Uh, it's right by Nelson Court and all those lessing port, all those, uh, developments, they typically do have backups. As a matter of fact, each one of those houses and those cul-de-sacs, they actually have, um, their own, I would say, small pump stations in order to handle the overflow from the, uh, sanitary sewer.
Okay. Um, would you expect those sections to get worse based on what's in the Fourth Round Affordable Housing Plan? Or is there enough geographical separation from the area where the backups occur that that's not so likely?
For me, it would be very hard to answer that question since we don't have any available or accurate data in our sanitary sewers, and how much of that is going to be allocated in that trunk of sanitary sewage is, is very difficult for me to answer it.
So by the same token, you probably can't answer if there would be problems in other areas where development would occur. Still on sewers, are you aware of concerns about odor from the sewer line in the Howell Drive area?
In which area, I'm sorry?
Uh, Howell Drive.
Howell Drive, yes. I am aware of it.
I know we have sworn testimony on that topic. So my question on that is knowing that there are a lot of unknowns, but West Essex Highlands, um, and then the proposed projects at Green Hill Retirement and the Wilshire, and also the one that we previously approved at 200 PVW, they're all physically very close to each other. Is it likely that that will increase that problem? I mean, I don't know if there's a constant of a sewer grid, the way there's an electric grid, but it seems like all four of those are extremely close to each other.
As far as I know, a couple of years ago, I would say probably in the summer of 2023, there was an issue with the Howell Drive residence in regards to the odor in the area.
Right.
It was actually investigated, I believe it was by the developer and their contractor, and it turned out that one of the pipes was actually, uh, crushed and it needed to be replaced. It also happens to be a very shallow sewer system. It is my understanding that for the West Essex Highlands, they are not connecting to the sewer that goes through Howell Drive because that sewer actually goes through the Verona Sewer Treatment Plan. Instead, they're gonna be connecting to the, uh, township's, uh, sewer main, for which we actually had a meeting with the developer as well as the, uh, consulting engineer in regards to how to upgrade the, uh, existing sewer lines in order for it to handle the flows.
Do you have a sense of whether we would need to do, do you have a sense of whether we would need to do additional upgrades for 103, for 250, and for, or for 200, and for 350 PVW if all three of those came online?
Well, if they were going to the same line, most likely, but I wouldn't be able to answer that question without
Without the mapping.
More accurate, everything. Mapping data.
Understood.
We don't have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. How do we go about getting the mapping? What need, what is the process that has to be started now to do that?
Well, the township needs to adopt in their capital budget. They will need to adopt, obviously allocate funds to do a mapping plan, um, once you map it, which is required by the EP for the stormwater. But we also have to do it for the sanitary. So after you map it and you have all the different drainage areas or sub areas of how much water and sewage go into each one, you will have to basically have a consulting company do the study and figure out how much does the existing pipes can handle based on their slope, size, and whether or not it's even feasible, because as we all know, underground, we have a lot of utilities that are crossing each other, and sometimes it's not feasible to enlarge the size of the pipe.
Do you know when the last time this mapping was done?
To tell you the truth, West Orange don't have a map.
Yeah, I understand, but.
And the only map that we have for San Estere is actually the map that was actually done by the, uh, joint meeting of Essex and Union County back in 1994. And obviously, since 1994, there has been a lot of development in the area.
Okay. Mayor McCartney?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Susan, for your, for the amendments that are made. And Chair, what I wanted to comment on is to really supplement what Engineer Carballo is saying and to have on the record that should the Planning Board approve this plan, that does not mean that each development that's in this plan is approved. So I think that needs to be clear to the public because it still has to go through the planning process, and not only on this overall that Engineer Carballo is addressing right now. We would have to do that as a board with any application that comes before all of us. So I, we understand what the engineer is saying. I just think it's important that we all understand that this does not mean that whatever's proposed in here is automatically approved. It still has to go through that scrutiny again. Thank you.
Agreed. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for, um, for Balal on the testimony?
I'm not sure who the question's for. Maybe it's for Susan. I'm not sure. So you've got a number of units that you say should go in a certain location. From what we're hearing from our engineer, we gotta be concerned about traffic, gas, electric, water, sewer, everything, Board of Ed. So the numbers you came up with, does that take into account? Because you didn't do a traffic study, you didn't do a utility study to see if it can serve those things. So you've got a number. We may not get to that number because of other constraints. Is that right?
Okay. Um, every site has to be, quote, suitable, and I think the mayor makes a very good point that, you know, there are, there are three different levels of consideration. One is a master plan, okay? And that's the housing plan. That's the policy. That's the recommendation. That's implemented through ordinances. That's where the details are, is to zoning, as you well know. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And then the third piece is a site plan or some site plan subdivision, at which point that's when the traffic, the infrastructure, all of that, that level of detail, as you're going through it right now for West Essex, you know, all that level of detail occurs. And I have said this before, I'll say it again, that those are all very, very legitimate concerns. But for the years that affordable housing has been in the courts and it's been determined that that's a constitutional obligation. And the courts, time and time again, have said, if there are issues addressing affordable housing, like infrastructure, deal with it. The most important piece here is constitutional obligation to address your affordable housing. And I'm the messenger. So don't kill me.
No, no, no.
As you well know, but I just want to say that again because I think it's a very important consideration. At the same time, what the mayor says is when it does come back to this board, you have a lot of discretion.
So typically, if it's a Planning Board application and it's an as-of-right development, you don't really get them on off-site improvements for traffic and things like that. Is that the same situation with this plan?
Well, if, if it's as-of-right.
Is that what, these are considered, the numbers you gave us at these locations? No? Okay.
It hasn't been zoned yet. It's when it's zoned.
So, so before we zone it, will we do a traffic study? Will we do a sewer?
Believe that that's the case. Um, that's up to you, but no. However, however, um, these are considerations that you, your attorney will have to let you know how much discretion you have when evaluating a site plan application.
Okay.
And whether it's as-of-right, whether there are variances associated with it, whatever it may be. And that's when I can't answer that.
So can we, can we include in the recommendation that we need to do a sewer and a drainage study and a traffic study and check the utilities and
you
or in other words, is it on the developer to do it? Or is it at a point where, yeah, I was told I could put this many units here. The town's got to pick up the slack on traffic and sewer and
That's
No? Okay.
That's certainly the case.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna make sure. Okay.
The, I can't answer that specifically.
All right.
Maybe, maybe your board attorney can, but I would say that that's something that you have to, that has to be it.
Okay.
Right now, right now, what's in front of you is whether the board is ready to adopt a housing plan. That's what's in front of you.
Right.
Okay? It's not whether there's going to be an infrastructure study
Okay.
to address the, the obligation.
Okay.
Okay? At some point in the future, that may be something.
Okay.
But at this stage, does that help?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah, yeah.
Goodly.
Ms. Caffeter?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you both for your testimony. Um, I do have a question about, uh, is there a way, do we have like a mechanism by which we can tell the developers that if capacity improvements are needed, you know, if we need to update the storm sewer system or the sanitary to convey the flow from their site, can we ask them to pay for it? Or share? Yeah.
Well, normally that happens when you're doing site plan review, and if they have to prove that they can develop the site and accommodate what is necessary. So I, conceptually, absolutely. I, I guess, you know, Diana, I don't know whether
On a site plan, you can get into all those details. The board can also, as a board, make recommendations to the council aside from this plan in anticipation of zoning that perhaps a town-wide or a section-wide study sanitary sewer is one. It sounded like the town should probably do that anyway. But the, but these things you can do separately from, from this plan, uh, as good planning.
And actually, there's a, there's a provision for a capital improvement plan that your engineer spoke about. That is something that comes here as well statutorily. And so certainly in terms of considering that, um, you could, you could address it that way as well. Just a thought.
Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alpert?
I'm good.
Mr. Cardoza?
No questions, thank you.
Councilperson Scarpah?
Yes, I do. Um, what is the approximate cost of this mapping and this project, capital project that we might have to undertake? And I know it's broadly, a broad number, estimate.
Well, for mapping the storm or finished mapping the storm, probably it's gonna cost us about $350,000. That's one of the proposals that I have received and I believe is going in front of the council on Wednesday for mapping the stormwater. So figure for the sanitary is gonna be about the same, if not more.
So the total cost for this kind of a project?
Probably looking for a million dollars, if not more.
Yeah, you know, given our $175 million of debt and 11 million of carrying costs and other projects that we have to do, you know, it's very disturbing to think about, you know, having to do all this at this time. How quickly would we need to do it?
Well, it's not gonna be done overnight. Figured like in a year, the stormwater probably could be, uh, the information could be collected, mapped. Then after that, you gotta get a consultant to analyze it.
So that's more cost.
Absolutely.
So we're looking at much more than a million dollars.
Yes.
How many millions do you think we're looking at when this whole project is done?
But we don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I think
Could be a few million or I, I just want to get some broad idea of what we're dealing with.
I, I'm gonna ask you to come back to our next meeting and give us, uh, a broad idea that we'll share with the council. That's gonna make sense, and we'll share with the public. That, that would make the most sense. You get a chance to sit down at your desk and look at it more scientifically. I think that'd be good, but we'll get it by the next, uh, Planning Board meeting, if that's
And I have one more question, um, for Mrs. Grill. Given that this is an unfunded mandate, like many are that come down from the government and the state, shouldn't we be looking at creating more localized density for all of these affordable housings, more in one place or in one area so that we don't have a mishmash of all kinds of development all over town that our infrastructure, traffic, and schools can't support?
Well, it's interesting. I guess there are different positions on that because what we heard at the last public hearing was people felt that there was too much concentrated in certain areas. So I guess it's a matter of perspective. So that we've tried, what we've tried to do is disperse because, to a certain extent, of what we heard the public say. And so
It appears a lot of it is on Pleasant Valley.
Yes.
Area when our goals for decades now have been to develop our downtown.
Yes.
So it looks like to me like a missed opportunity.
Well, we, we did replace. That's exactly what we did. We did take out 762 and replace it with 217 Main. Exactly what was the intent, which was to reinforce or promote the downtown and revitalization of the downtown. So I, I thought that was something that not only this board was interested in, but also many members of the public as well.
I guess it's a good step in that direction, but thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Alpert?
I wanted to ask you, uh, two things. First, on the CV, I'm thrilled to see CVS on there because, you know, I think we do need to kind of awaken the, right, the, the middle section of Main Street there. Um, I'm curious if CVS can't go larger and be more units than it currently is, uh, set for. I thought that maybe it could go higher possibly, or
Possibly, and maybe that's something that we, um, that you, as the Planning Board, want to look at in a little bit more, um, depth. And that may be something that you may want to revise the plan subsequent to do that, and you have every right to do that.
And then do we, as the Planning Board, initiate the process to suggest recommended changes to the plan after it's approved? Is that how that works?
Can. Can, you definitely can. Um, absolutely, you can.
And I guess my other question is on, uh, 20 Main Street, the, uh, right, the the older Rite Aid site at Northfield and Main. Because I feel like that is, you know, that's, that's a corner that's kind of alive as it is with, you got Benji's, you've got Orange Sky Coffee, you've got the bakery right there. And I I feel like adding residential there could do a lot for us.
Uh, you may be right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not right. I I think what we were trying to do is at least, um, at least address some of the comments. Are we addressing all of it? Maybe not, but that's for another day as far as I'm concerned. And I do not suggest that you just let that go.
Right.
You're the one, as this board, you're in charge of adopting the housing plan. So.
So I'm very happy to see 762 PVW gone, but I still feel that there's that northern section of PVW with the two that are in this plan and the one that we already approved and the other one that's under, it's a lot in one very tight area. So, thank you.
Captain Nobrini, do you have any questions?
Uh, just one question, one comment. Uh, Mr. Carvalho, thank you for your thorough assessment. Uh, my question is, irregardless, and I know we'll be just to death up here, but irregardless of uh, how this affordable housing plan goes, that mapping and that sewage and the consulting, that all needs to be done.
It definitely needs to be done for the storm water to fulfill our storm water for main requirements. As far as the sanitary, there's nothing in writing really that says that it has to be done. But honestly and truthfully, it's for the best interest of the township that we do map it and eventually that we do know where are we lacking capacity within the township? And where can we actually make improvements?
And that information would make this next process easier if we had that.
It will make it easier for everybody. It would also allow me, when I'm doing the road improvement projects, to incorporate the different improvements for the sanitary and the storm sewers.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your recommendation.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions?
No additional questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor McCartney.
June, I feel like I want to make another point that it seemed, we did not pick and choose the properties on Pleasant Valley Way. These are privately owned properties that have come before the, before the administration seeking to develop. So it's not that we went and put them in the plan. They've already been before us, just like 762, now that we were going to decide if we take that out. But these are privately owned. And what, to me, what we're trying to do with this affordable housing plan is to, um, I want to say curtail or limit what it is that we're asking them to do on the property. So I think that that needs to be stressed.
So ladies and gentlemen, by way of history, this is the fourth round. So that means we've done this three previous times. So as we look around town, there is multiple areas of affordable housing. These are just more infill places that we're looking at again. So this is not the first time. It's not that we're picking one section. Uh, in other rounds, we've had other sections that had more affordable housing. And we're working as hard as we can, but the the take home message from the mayor is that, uh, everything comes back to the planning board. So this is not perfunctory, it's all done. This means these are the areas that we have looked at or our planner has looked at. There can be others. If we adopt this plan tonight, tomorrow we could add more. So it's not a final thing and I've lived through this three times previously and that's what's happened. We've had other areas that we looked at, uh, people sold properties, people moved and properties became available. So things happen over the course of the time that we have to do these projects. So this is not the absolute finish. This is the beginning. We're looking, we're looking again and again, and other people in the township may come to us and say, oh, by the way, we have a project. Uh, that's how we end up with Stone Hill, which, uh, won an award recently for not only affordable housing, but smart growth. So, um, I I would recommend that, though, we take up before we're done this evening uh, to, uh, tell the town council that there are a couple of things they need to do and looking into the future, and we'll wait for Mr. Carvalho's report to see, uh, uh, an idea of, uh, cost to do this as capital improvements going forward. But as the town grows, we have to do this. It makes a lot of sense. And if the, if the age of the latest report was 1994, a couple of things we have to look at also. And that's the value of the public hearing, uh, the planning board's meetings and people explaining things to us that we didn't know of hand. Mayor McCartney?
Thank you. So I wanted to pick up on what, um, board member Ken Alper is saying, that we have met numerous times with the owners of that property uh, that you're referring to. This would be on the corner of Valley Road, Northfield, Main Street, that whole intersection. We have met with them. They do want to develop that property. They own the whole, the store strips along the front. So though we do want to see something happen there, it would displace all of those business owners while that gets developed. I wasn't ready to do that particularly. You just mentioned Orange Sky having developed and invested right in their Benji's. You know, there are just too many properties right there that would be displaced. So yes, we would still consider that. And as the chairman said, we can amend the plan. But, uh, I did not want to put that in at this time for that reason.
Thank you, Ms. Carvalho. Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, at this time, we're going to open this up to public comment. Uh, if you have a comment, uh, about the affordable housing plan, please come up, be recognized. We have three minutes to speak. Okay? And, uh, we're going to be just addressing the revision this evening. We're not going to re- re-address the initial portion of the. It's a ball. We're not going to readdress what we've heard last time. So this is just the latest portion, the revision that has been presented this evening. Okay? So you have three minutes, sir? Say your name for the record and go right ahead.
Paul Trachtenberg, 96 Sullivan Drive in West Orange. Uh, I have questions that I think, uh, uh, start with what was said tonight, but may extend beyond, but let me try them. I have a series of questions I hope can be answered. Question one is whether, um, the planner is familiar with and used in preparing the draft, uh, report and the update now, the Fair Share Housing Center December 2024 guide. I don't know whether you're going to answer now, or I'm, I'm happy to list all my questions.
You're welcome.
The guide, incidentally, is entitled Developing Effective Housing Plans in the Fourth Round, A Guide for Municipalities, Planners, Developers, uh, Nonprofits and Advocates.
Yes.
Okay.
I.
Uh, thank you. Did you apply to the fourth round plan, including the amendments, the site suitability standards as outlined in that guide at page 23?
Absolutely, and it's in the plan. Each one of the, those criteria is specifically laid out.
Okay, including the, uh, references, the quotes in the Fair Share Housing Center uh, booklet or guide to the Supreme Court guidelines? Like, there has to be an accommodation between affordable housing and sound planning and environmental protection?
Well, of course, that's always the case. That's been the case law for years. Um, we, we relied on the criteria that is necessary to determine suitability of each site. And again, that's detailed and laid out for each of the sites in the housing plan.
Okay, so in your professional opinion, the fourth round proposals reflect both sound planning and, uh, take into account the environmental impact of those proposals?
Yes.
Okay? Did you consider in preparing the fourth round plan that the hotly contested West Essex Highlands development from the third round might not be approved or built in a timely way? Which would mean 100 additional, uh, affordable housing units?
I will not answer that. That is in front of the planning board as a site plan application. That's for, that's for a different.
Didn't consider that.
That's for a different, um, time. It is within the plan. It was part of the settlement agreement. It's in front of this board right at this point, and that's my response.
Frankly, that highlights one of my concerns, which is the jurisdictional lines that are being drawn. The planner is saying, well, this is my jurisdiction and nothing beyond. The planning board is saying, well, this is our jurisdiction. We're confined by the ordinance and we can't go about beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Trachtenberg. Next.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, Mr. Trachtenberg, your three minutes is up. Thank you, sir. You can come back.
Yeah.
Uh, I appreciated the township engineer's cogent and honest report. Uh, but it does raise my concern and I have questions about it in terms of things falling into the cracks. That is, as I understood the report, she indicated that there are problems with storm water, with sewage, with potable water, with utilities, with traffic, with schools. Uh, I'm just hoping on behalf of myself and the public that somebody in the municipality will substantially address all those concerns before we proceed with developing, uh, what I take to be now with the elimination of 762, uh, about 1,128 new units on Pleasant Valley Way or in the vicinity of Pleasant Valley Way, uh, which I think generates four to 8,000 additional car trips a day.
Thank you, Mr. Trachtenberg. Come right up. State your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Dolly Malanga Ridge Road, on behalf of our Green West Orange members. Why approve a fantasy plan? We spent good money and time on this. We should get it right from the beginning, and this plan ignores reality. This is a luxury apartment plan with a small number of affordable housing units. As such, it does not reach our goals. And therefore, it is fairly useless. This plan, not only, it, not only that, it violates the intent of our master plan, which clearly recognizes that not every available forest is a building site. The master plan commits West Orange to identify and protect at-risk natural resources such as stream corridors, core forests, wetlands, steep slopes and water features from disturbance and future development. We are committed to that plan, and yet this affordable housing plan does the opposite. It targets the few remaining natural areas, our core forests and steep slopes as if they were, vacant lots waiting to be paved. At every rainstorm, we are reminded of the consequences. Without trees and their root systems, we lose natural storm water control and rain pours into basements. Without forests' canopies, we lose the moisture that protects us from wildfire and ever-growing threat in our area. So replacing our green infrastructure with concrete and asphalt is not progress, it is self-destruction. This proposal ignores key planning and engineering fundamentals, site suitability, flood mitigation, traffic capacity and school enrollment. A plan that disregards these realities will create problems of such magnitude that West Orange will become an unattractive, unlivable community. Yes, the affordable housing is essential, but not at the expense of environmental safety or stability. And I urge this plan to go back to the drawing board and identify appropriate locations that respect the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you very much.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Anne Studholm. I'm an attorney at Post Pollock in Roseland. Um, our zoning group there represents Pedro Gomez. I've got him here with his partners, Tony Marcuris and Laz Vastardos, who are from the family that owned the Essex House Restaurant for decades. Um, they own the site at 525 Northfield Avenue. They've been in discussion with the town over the course of this year, but not with my involvement um, as to, uh, proposing it as an affordable housing mechanism. It's in the B2 zone. The B2 zone permits mixed use. The B2 zone and its conditional mixed use does not have a limit on how many units of housing would be there. Uh, my understanding is that West Orange was, the officials they met with, the staff they met with, were very interested in working with them on this. And that the concept got reduced from 115 to 105 units. And now it's shown as a mechanism in the plan for 60 units. That took my client quite by surprise. We presume it's just a miscommunication in the rush to get this plan done. We understand you want to adopt it tonight. However, I'd just like to make a record and request that the plan be amended because otherwise you are down zoning a site that can yield a lot more affordable credits. Because it's a redevelopment site, you get 1.5 credits. So a site plan was filed today showing that you get 1.5 credits per unit at least. And I want to just ask, Mr. Gomez, a couple of questions, put that on the record. I don't know if his partners need to speak, and I see we've got a three minute clock. I hope you give him three minutes. Thank you. Yes, I do. Okay, so very quickly, you start to have three minutes. What your interaction was with the 115 unit plan that went down?
125, it's in the plan. The point is, is that.
I'm not sure if you guys want to pause the time while you guys are working.
No.
Okay, so, uh, we met with town over the course of six, seven months. We came in three times.
You're so nice.
Uh, originally, we wanted to build a project that was a lot higher. And we were told that that was unlikely to happen. Uh, we actually started closer to like 150 units, then we came to 125, 115, and we kept coming down, coming down. Currently, we have no height variance. Uh, we have no D variances. We have no parking variance. We sat with the town on three occasions, and every time that they said, hey, we really don't like this, we changed it. Uh, we had no amenities. We added over 10,000 square feet of amenities. Now we have two courtyard. We have a 2,000 square foot co-working space. We have gyms, we have club rooms, lounges. We even have a zen garden, uh, which is very popular amenity space in another one of my buildings. Um, so we sat with the town, heard over three meetings what they wanted. And at this point, we're down to, like I said, barely any variances and a site that has been sitting empty for many, many years.
And could you tell them just quickly, in the 105 unit plan, how many actual units of affordable housing are generated?
Currently, it would generate 21 units, uh, and 84, uh, market rate units.
And there would be, I know the school will agree, you get a 0.5 per unit bonus. So that's 31 or 32, depending on how it goes out, uh, credits that can be yielded from this. There are other aspects of it in the site plan that was filed today. Um, in the proposal describing reasons, uh, for relief. Uh, they are all bulk variances. Again, the zone currently does not limit the number of residential units, nor does it have a required amount of retail square footage, just that it has to be mixed here. We're concerned that this plan gets adopted tonight. It will be of effect, a down zoning of an affordable housing mechanism. And that's a situation where the town's current situation, that's difficult. We don't want to have that difficulty happen without being able to make you aware and see what can be done about not having a resulting down zoning by almost 50% of a project that the owners considers was being accepted and had that all the possible concerns. We think this is a mistake, very understandable. Um, and it came up at the last minute. I don't know if it was even in the plan like this in October. Um, so we, I'm sure you can ask some questions if you want, but we want to ensure you are aware of this.
Yeah, and I just want to keep, quick statement, our agenda was not to have to file a lawsuit, the other lawsuits you guys had.
No, no, no.
We wanted to sit down, we came in, we wanted to hear, we wanted to listen, then you come in and say, this is what I want, right? We came in and said, this is what we're thinking. What do you see that you want to change? Oh, change this, change it. Okay, cool. Uh, you have too many floors, it's too high. Okay, take off a floor. So we actually took the time and invested our time to please with town folks, right? Um, so our goal is not to have a lawsuit, our goal is to get this project, which is a really good project um, in the main corridor that will look beautiful. Um, and as you guys mentioned, we have water, we have gas, we have all the things that you won't have to worry about. And have enough. All the research has been done. I just want to thank you for your time. If anyone has questions, we have multiple questions.
Thank you.
That's true.
Okay, nope, uh, we're not here for questions right now. Even, uh, even if this is adopted this evening, the zone plan can be changed. Recommendations go to the council. So this is not, this is not an absolute, this is a guide. Okay, so if you file something, we will take in that, take that into consideration, absolutely.
Well, the site plan has been filed. You could direct the school tonight to change that, 60 to 105. That could be done tonight. It also could be done later, but if it'll have to be done later, that's, I don't want to get in a situation where, well, we were told maybe it will be done, and then it doesn't get done, and then we have 50% downzoning and that, as of even current. See the plan.
And ultimately, it's just a site that.
I don't think there'll be a problem. I don't, I don't foresee a problem. The goal is to get the affordable housing, and the board will work with you.
Right. Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Klein.
Follow up. So Susan, if you pick 60 units, they want to do 105. If they can show 105 works from sewer, water, traffic, gas, electric, all that stuff, you're not going to say, no, we don't want, we don't want 10 more units?
In the context of the plan, I'm not saying yes. I'm not saying no.
Right.
It's got to look at, in the context. It is in the site, in the plan right now.
As, like, 60 units?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, no, I'm not, I'm not responding any more than what I just did.
Okay, all right. So if they want to come in with 105?
They've already filed the application, and it's complete.
Yes.
Okay. They beat them. They beat it to the punch. All right.
Right.
Anyway.
Right.
This is a project that could start in spring and be ready by the end of the year, right? So I think that's ready to go.
Yeah, once the application is filed, it's the application is filed. We haven't, we haven't resolved this this evening, so your application is in.
It is, it is in, and I would just say, at the moment, it does not meet the devariance. If the ordinance downzones this property and puts a never-before-existing limit on the number of houses, it's going to need to be backed. So that's what I'm just trying to look.
But you filed your application already. You're getting the zoning that's in place now.
Right. Long as that's on the record.
I haven't looked at the application or anything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night. Come right up. Say your name for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. Sorry, I was at Disney. I lost a little bit of my voice. Yeah, I need a vacation from my vacation. I digress. My name is Jaclyn Endy. I live at 6 Beverly Road. I guess my, I'm here again. I've been here before. I just reject the idea that this is a fair share plan, because I don't see anything fair coming to West Orange. I understand there's been, in my opinion, years of neglect that have led us to this corridor, and we're kind of painted ourselves into a corner and limited our options. However, I don't understand how we're getting 1,000 new apartments, and we're only getting 158 affordable. How is that a fair share plan? I don't understand those, that math. That math ain't mathing, because that's like 10%. And what, and so we're going to do this 10 more times, because we need 1,000 units, correct? So we're going to be up here 10 more times to get all of our affordable units accounted for? I don't understand. I have to ask, how does this benefit West Orange? You know, it's just placing a Band-Aid on a gaping wound created by years of neglect and poor foresight. What are we getting in return for rewriting our zoning codes to fit these projects? Are we asking anything of the developers? I'm hearing some developers in the room who want to develop, and they want to put a zen garden. I guess somebody asked them to put a zen garden in. How about they contribute to our schools? Do you guys understand the crisis that our schools are facing? We are $9 million in debt. We, and we are going, we are chasing the bottom. We are eventually going to bottom out, because we cannot keep up with the rise in the insurance premiums, the percentages of property insurance. The cost of everything is going up. These are contracts that have negotiated, and we are chasing the bottom here. So any, there should be no deal in place that we consider that does not give something back to our schools, because we are going to need a school to house the 10,000 new families that are coming to West Orange, because we do not plan. We don't plan. And then what, I don't understand. Ms. Mayor, you've been in power for 25 years. How do we not have a plan? I don't, this is so frustrating to be here. I, we need better, we deserve better. We need people who are going to think about the future of West Orange and our schools, guys. I cannot, please go to a school board meeting. Please, understand the crises that we are facing. We cannot house all of these people, and if we're going to do it, we got to demand more from our developers. 10% is a pittance. It is chasing the bottom. Please, do not accept this. Back to the drawing board. Let's get more. If we're in this pickle, let's get more out of it than the pittance that we're getting, because this is not affordable housing. This is developer housing. This is for profit, not for people. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Jennifer Oreo, Bellevue Terrace. I reviewed the plan and recently had the privilege of walking through the community with one of its residents. During the visit, I saw just, just more than infrastructure concerns. I saw a community at risk, aging maintenance, unmaintenance gas leaks. Mind you, where the gas leak, there was a newborn that was a preemie only hundreds of feet away from that gas leak that was unmaintained, from what the resident stated, for about two months. Erosion, and only one way out of the development. The roads are so narrow that even in an event of a fire or an emergency, it would be nearly impossible for the first responders, specifically fire trucks, to reach the families in time to narrow roads in the community. So when you build this, are we going to be, are we going to be thinking about the residents who are going to be residing there and how emergency vehicles are going to be going through? This is not just only a safety issue, which you guys are doing, just like the other person who was stating, that, the other woman that was here. The more residents that we, that come into our township, the less space we're going to have in our schools. I have a six-year-old that's going to be going to Redwood, and right now he's going to a private school. He's being taught within eight, he's one of eight students in there. Now he's going to be going in, and there's going to be, like, he's going to be one of 25. What are we doing when we build these new, these new developments? Are we going to get another school? I've asked one of the developers, and he said, well, we don't need a school. We've built one before. We need more schools in this place. Again, there's no planning. We're just going ahead and just building and not thinking about the safety of our residents. We don't have that many police officers to equate for the amount of people that live in town. So when there's a safety issue that's going to happen in our town, and God forbid, if it's a serious one, like things that are going on in our country, we better hope that it's not during rush hour, that our, that our police department can come and help us out, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to have certain. My name is Philip Litvinoff. I live in Linden Avenue here in West Orange. I don't know if I need all three minutes, but I know our chair will tell me if I'm, if I'm right or not. I was watching the Zoom meeting this evening, because I really did not want to have to come down here yet again and listen to all this back and forth. And I listened to Mr. Albert making a very passionate plea to not burden the Pleasantdale area with all this development, and I think he was right. But when I heard Mayor McCartney then come after him and tried to, you know, defend the developers who are investing in this town to develop, I said, no, I can't just stay home. I need to come down here and make a comment. The developers are making a risky bet, no different than if you and I bet on penny stocks in the stock market. They're betting on the hope that West Orange will keel to their interests in order to make a lot of money at the expense of the township. And it's wrong. It's wrong to burden the Pleasantdale section on the entire, or the primary, the primarily amount of the development for this. It's wrong to have the developers put such a small number of apartments available for the people who need the help. And I don't know who it said, because I was driving down here, but somebody else made the comment, said, well, why isn't the development going on in the downtown area? Literally, we're Northfield Avenue and Main Street meet. Candidly, if you're trying to help people who don't have the money to live properly, give them the opportunity to live in an area where there is transportation. There is no transportation on Pleasant Valley Way. The camp went out of business, or is going out of business. Give them the right to live in an area where there's an Orange train station or New Jersey Transit, or places where they can go to make a livelihood. That's fair, isn't it? Doesn't that make more sense than to burden the rest of the township? And I agree with the previous people who spoke about the, the expense to the township to try to provide schooling for these children. There will be children. You can't say there's going to be only two, one-room apartments. They're going to be using the system, and we are overstretched as it is, thanks to the overdevelopment of the township. I urge you to look over this plan again and come up with a more reasonable plan that benefits everybody, including, guess what, the people who have lived here for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Rosenbaum, 148 Marion Drive, West Orange. I'm the president of the condominium association that 148 is part of. I'm talking in reference. Is this not on?
As it sounds.
Came to this meeting to discuss 177 Marion Drive, which is an ARC residence, and now is being listed as a two, two-unit addition to the fair housing. It's a one-family townhouse. Can that be? And it will create a significant number of legal difficulties for us, because the, is administered by our Master D, which defines share of costs, things like that. And we're going to have an unknown division of this unit, or we don't know what the future of the unit is going to be. So I don't know. Here I'm listening to everyone talking about new development. This is a 43-year-old townhouse.
I think that's a legal issue that will be addressed. I don't think tonight, but I.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not units. It's counted as bedrooms, and it's listed in the plan as credits. So there is, there is a difference between it's not units.
And who's going to own it?
Well, ARC owns it, from what I understand, and that would be part of your condominium association's bylaws, and how you're going to handle it that way.
But the, this is a situation, I know this is a legal issue, and I'm not really prepared to discuss this, but I want to point that as, you're talking about new development. This is one unit. It's a single-family unit, and I don't know how you're going to administer it.
It's, it's, it's registered as an affordable, the two bedrooms are registered as being used as affordable units. So that's why it's included in the plan.
Change.
There's nothing changing the way.
We have never been made aware of this, and this whole thing, when we, when it was, you did not contact us? There's been no contact with the association?
Well, that would be between the unit owner and the association in terms of, the contact is a public notice to everyone. Everybody in town didn't get a letter. It was public notice. That's why it took us from September 10th, did some revisions, until November 10th, our first public hearing, because we put it in the newspaper, we put it online on the website, we followed the statute, and that's the notice that was required.
Well, I think we're going to have to have more discussion about this.
And I know I've already been in contact with the condominium.
Attorney, yeah.
Yeah.
And this means additional costs for us, and in these times, costs are significant?
I understand.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive of the Sewer Smell fame. If it, if it doesn't matter, and there can be revisions, and there will, it sounds like there will have to be revisions, I guess the question is, why approve this plan in this form tonight? Why are none of these single-family homes being offered for development? Why are they all rentals? Who, who will this benefit, I guess, aside for developers who will collect rent in perpetuity? Why are we being forced to urbanize? We moved here to the suburbs for a reason, and yet, if all of these plans go through, the town's going to be unrecognizable with its new cityscape. I guess another question would be, why can't we pause and maybe give the new town attorney a chance to give some feedback on this? I'm applauding you, and thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening. Joseph Panolo, President, We Care Angier, Essex County, 200-foot notice area. I'm here with Comet and Deliverable. I came to assure that a email and a package of information that was sent on September 19th to Hira Brul, to Susan Brul, members of the planning board, the council, Essex County Planner and Fair Share Housing, which document why this site does not meet eligibility criteria under affordable housing, NJAC 5:97-3.13. It is not available. It is not, it is not approvable. It is not a developable. It is not suitable. That was true last time, but it wasn't disclosed by your town attorney or the developer's attorney, who both know those things to be true. But those things are true still to this day. The site is not served by water and sewer, gas, electric. It is encumbered. It was environmentally sensitive. The documentation for that, I want to make sure that you did have possession of that before this year was over. So if the time comes later, when we need to know that it was known prior to this plan's adoption, that it was a true statement, these documents are in your possession, with the exception of two, which I will deliver tonight, which include the Essex County Board of Commissioners Resolution, which on October 22nd adopted a resolution recommending that this town deny this plan and preserve this site due to its environmental sensitivity, and a sign-on letter that's been signed by at least 30 different NGOs in the state of New Jersey, environmental organizations, five mayors, at least 10 environmental commissioners by now, that are recommending that this town preserve the last core forest in the county that is unprotected with natural resources that are clear. Just so everybody's clear, the planning board inherits a zoning ordinance that it has to operate within. The zoning ordinance for this site in this project is the only one in town for which every single ordinance is suspended. That would include things like safety, steep slope, wetlands. Won't get into that. But to be clear, the site is not served by public transit. The cost of infrastructure in the settlement agreement, which the planning board also inherits, requires that the developer incurs no off-track site improvements. It is at least a mile and a half, and it's not clear exactly how much further, from the property line sewer, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, electric, gas. Isn't served. The millions of dollars that's going to cost the taxpayers isn't quantified, isn't known. It's not even a part of the plan. So just so it's clear and that it's known, these kinds of things, what the town engineer had to say about the larger plan of town, fair statement. What's known here now, already, it was known five years ago, 10 years ago, still true, is a fact. So I wanted to make sure, and I draw on Mr. Bacon, man, to make sure that there's no way that this is not. So you have a copy, please. Mr. Chair, I know you have one. Council of Governors, I know you have one, but these are hard copies, so that everybody has it. So when it is time to object to the plan, when this is fine, I'll, we'll be back putting the facts on the table, that this is never meeting eligibility criteria.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening. Seth Weissletter, resident of West Orange. Not a professional town planner, but have attended almost 23 street meetings here, talking with residents and trying to understand what's realistic. Even listening to some of the speakers, I'm not sure what's realistic anymore. I want to start with something simple. West Orange owes itself to be both creative and realistic about how and where we grow. My concern is the rezonings, the proposed, the adoption, whatever words we want to interchange with, of 103 Pleasant Valley Way, Green Hill, and the 350 Pleasant Valley Way. They're an eighth of a mile apart. Combined with the 496 units at Essex Highlands that is being proposed just another half, one and a half miles away, the concentrate that we're adding is another 1,000 apartments into one small corridor without a realistic plan for impacts. Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock Avenue are already stressed corridors. Loading this much density into such a limited area is something West Orange can absorb, cannot absorb without major consequences. Loading this much density into such a limited area is something West Orange can absorb, cannot absorb without major consequences. We understand the township has a legal housing obligation. But here we are at our 12th hour, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. We have a developer coming who's confused. This is not a dispute. This is the issue of how we meet the obligation. Whether placing nearly a thousand new apartments in the Pleasant Valley Way corridor. Is that the most responsible, sustainable path? This is one of the least walkable, least transit served, most congested part of town. Drive through it next week. It's not where West Orange should be concentrating on our growth. If we're serious about meeting our obligation, as everyone says we are, we must work together as a community and should prioritize redevelopment, not raw new development. Putting more of our future housing in the downtown corridor and other true smart growth areas with walkability, transit access and infrastructure that exists. This is how we get closer to that number. Let me highlight the three concerns that aren't made of, like, can't be fixed. Traffic in circulation, Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock are already operating at their limits. When you combine the 195 units proposed with the 295 units and the 496, that's a thousand new apartments feeding into that same road network. Using standing standard practice, planning practice, developments of the size typically adds hundreds of new peak hour cars per trip. To put that into terms, this is the traffic growth we normally see over a five to 10 year period. Now we've dropped that and making it into a boom, all of a sudden, one day period of when these projects are approved. It's like adding the morning rush of an entire new neighborhood without widening a single lane or giving drivers any new ways to move through that corridor. Those trips will funnel into the same choke points, Pleasant Valley Way, Eagle Rock Avenue, Kent's Terrace, Sullivan Drive, wherever they're trying to turn. And surrounding those cut through streets, Mormon Terrace, Oak Terrace, Woodland Avenue. They're flying through Woodland Avenue.
Mr. Weissletter?
Okay, I'll come back and finish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Goldman, 14 Moran Road. Um, apologies, you get four hour, four flights canceled and a lovely Uber from LaGuardia, Justin, today. So gave me a lot of time to read, which was great. Um, first off, as I was listening from the tarmac and then from the Uber on the way here, just for everyone's sake in this room, highly disingenuous and not appropriate for us to say that we can continue to come back and come back. We've been here for 30 meetings for another project. Let's not use the West Essex as a gold standard as to we can just keep coming back and relitigating this thing. That's a waste of everyone's time here. Let's get it right the first time. Um, so part of our affordability conversation, we should be having deeper conversations with the county. We have county property that we are not allowed to touch, nor should we touch. But that should be considered into the factor of available land that we have. We can't build on county golf courses. We can't build on the reservation. We get nothing but a small discount to golf. We should be having negotiations with the county as to how we can subject and divert the allotments that we owe because we can't use that green acre land for building. Um, in April, and I requested this from the county, from the municipal clerk who gave it to me, in April, this town passed a storm water ordinance. And if I didn't hear correctly on the Uber over here, we don't have the map. We don't have a storm water utility or sewage map. I don't know what ordinance we could have possibly passed then in April or in May to relitigate the current statutes and standings of our storm water processes. We passed that ordinance in the spring. How do we not have that map? We also have a climate and energy master plan that this town should be operating under that has to do with our ability to have environmentally friendly policies, utility costs, water and storm water runoff concerns. You cannot do any of that to the inherent spirit of a plan without having a map of where our sewage and water runoff goes. I don't know how that's possible, given all of the state law that is required to do that, especially the 2023 revision to the storm water planning ordinances that require each town to have that in order to look at any new development properties. You must, as you municipality, look at the storm water impact. I don't know how that has not been addressed. That was baffling to hear on the way over here. Um, there's a ton of other things in here, but on page 122, um, it says that we would be proposing to look at, um, an ordinance regarding accessory apartments. My understanding is that accessory apartments are ADUs, accessory dwelling units. How are we operating on a master plan for housing under the guise that we might do something later? We might be considering the town's authority to revamp the zoning laws to accommodate for accessory dwelling units in the future. We might pass that ordinance, but we're going to bake it into the plan that's presented tonight. As far as I'm understanding, that plan, based on the wording here, is proposed ordinance, which means we have not adopted that as a municipality, yet we're factoring that in into the number of allocated units that we're trying to prescribe to. That seems like we're making hypotheticals that could then subsequently be impacted in the future. I know my three minutes are up, but we can't operate on maybes to then bake something into a plan that we're doing today. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Joseph Naliath. I live at 33 Ridgeview Ave. At the far end of town where Eagle Rock crests, the valley is pleasant for mother nature knows best. There stand the great highlands with trees tall and wide. Their roots sip the rainfall their branches provide. I came here tonight in this orange tinted fleece to speak for the forest, to beg you for peace. For the trees can't have lawyers nor land deeds nor pleas. So I stand before you and I speak for the trees. You see every pine, every oak wise and old keeps the flood from our homes through the storms and the cold. But cut down those slopes for a thousand new flats and the water will rise through our basements and mats. The soils are mottled, the engineers say, meaning water lies hidden not that far away. When rain starts to pour and the basins can't drain, Canoe Brook will bellow and swell with the rain. The county has spoken, the scientists plead, preserve what is living, don't pave it in steed. The bees and the foxes and songbirds all know, once the highlands are gone, there's nowhere to go. So buy it, protect it, let wild things remain. Make trails through the ridges where green hearts sustain. Pleasant Dale Reservation, an arboretum too, a forest for many, not condos for few. Because unless someone here cares a whole awful lot, this mountain, this forest, this home will be not. I'm the Lorax of West Orange and I'll say once again, when you fight for the trees, you fight for your kin. This might've been a little bit more impactful if I got to read it during that Halloween weekend, but, uh, it's still a very important message. I just really hope that whatever plan is adopted ends up not developing over any existing tree coverage in West Orange. And that we instead look into smarter development and redevelopment of existing properties. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
Yeah.
Dave Fresca Verona. I just want to, planning board, I sort of is very aware of what your charge is, right? To look for consistency with the master plan for any proposed development. And then in doing so, you're looking to weigh, right, the benefits versus the, the detriments to the town. I don't know how, after so many months, after so many people, for so many reasons, legitimate reasons why this shouldn't go forward, how the board would still vote to, to move this forward. So please consider that, consider what's, what's the overall, the benefit to the town, to the citizens. And consider your legacy for the town. What is that legacy going to be? Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Board, Experts. I'm Joe Krikoviac. I live on Grandview Avenue. I am also a member of the Town Council. I wanted to say a number of things. First, uh, thanks to everyone for listening. I think this, uh, plan is an improvement, uh, to the extent that it can be an improvement. Uh, it's all, I'm also, uh, appreciative that there's a lot of people here, perhaps not as many as the last time. But that's usually a function of what happens at the planning board as, as most of you recognize. Uh, I just want to try to give a few words of advice to people. I've been living with, uh, affordable housing for almost 10 years now. And so, uh, I know that it's a difficult, complex, time consuming uh, issue to learn and to deal with. So my first, uh, recommendation is to spend as much time as you can allow to learn about the law. I've heard a lot of comments tonight, a lot of questions that reflect, uh, not as deep an understanding of the law as, uh, would be beneficial to, uh, our commentary. You need to understand, I think, that the plan is designed not to guarantee anything. As the mayor said, being included in the plan does not guarantee you're going to get the project. And not being included in the plan does not guarantee that the project won't come anyway. This is a plan that is largely designed to remove impediments from actually being able to do affordable housing. And it's also in some instances to enable affordable housing projects if they are worthwhile. Everything has to go through the planning board for the project to be realized. Two other suggestions. You need to come to these application hearings whenever they are here because that's when you're going to make your voice heard. That's when your voice is going to be making an impact. When you come up at a application and express your opinion and ask your trenchant questions. Second, you need to know who in the state legislature actually their position on this law. And you need to let your legislators know and you need to vote accordingly. If this is important to you, as it sounds like, you need to vote that way. If your legislature vote, your legislator representatives voted for this plan last year, you should vote against them. This is among the most coercive law I have ever seen in my entire life. And it is extremely difficult to fight as all of you are trying to do tonight. It's not, for the most part, going to happen. The law does not allow it. They don't care about infrastructure. They don't care about anything else except getting these affordable housing units done. And just finally, I just want to say uh, we need to get this plan moving. There were some questions about why, why are we, uh, uh, not, not making a better plan? Filing this plan almost completely gives us immunity against builders remedy lawsuits. A builder's remedy lawsuit is a developer coming to us, to, to the courts and asking the courts to help them build their plan. We're not only going to be, uh, arguing against the developer, we're going to be arguing against the court. We've had five plans filed against us because we missed the filing deadline of June 30th. We need to get this plan done and we need to get that immunity because we're already going to be spending huge amount of resources, including legal fees, trying to fight these five builders remedy lawsuits. And more could come while we're talking tonight. You already heard a potential threat from a previous speaker. So I urge you to get this plan done, get it to the council, and hopefully the council will approve it and we can move it on to the courts and get the immunity. So we can stop getting these lawsuits fought against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, President, Council President Kroweak.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joyce Rudin. I also am a member of the council. And I do not agree with what, uh, my council colleague just said. I don't think that rushing to pass this just because we are under the gun is the right thing to do. Today, my husband had surgery and I was able to be here tonight because the surgery went well and he is in good hands. If the surgeon had said, let's just slash and hack and put this here and that there so we can make more billables, I would have pulled him out. So when I see this plan that wants to slash and hack our township, put this here and that there without considering the needs of our residents and quality of life, a plan that puts developers, their profits and their threats before all else. I have to say, drop the scalpel, step away from the patient, which is our township. You, the board, are the surgeons guiding our township to grow responsibly while preserving our remaining natural resources that gives this town its character and its livability. The tiny number of affordable housing units that is actually being provided in this massive construction plan is a simple, is a symptom of this botched operation. Two properties, 103 and 1155 P, um, Pleasant Valley Way, don't even adhere to the 20% affordable mandate of our own town's ordinance. Why is that even allowed? Everybody in this town knows what this town needs. It has been talked about for decades. We are a disgrace in comparison to other towns. We need a nice downtown for our residents to support thriving commerce and to showcase our rich history and our diversity. This plan does none of those things. Instead, it gives us sprawl, congestion, more flooding, overburdening our infrastructure and destroying the natural beauty and the reasons why people chose to make West Orange home. Grayson Jordan, a resident and architect, spoke before this board on September 12th. He sent an email to many of you emphasizing that such an obligation requires a strategic framework. He suggested targeting re and rezoning focused on our underutilized and defunct commercial parcels in our downtown, a plan that would make us the envy of Maplewood and Montclair. A plan devised in concert with the affected neighborhoods. From his professional vantage, West Orange has a rare opportunity to turn a housing mandate into a shared vision. At the last hearing on this matter, the chair, after hearing the articulate and well thought out valid objections of our community, opted not to take a vote and dismissively turned to the residents and said, you win. This is not a game. Winning, winning is when we replace the cut, slash and greed and replace it with guardianship, nurturance and responsibility. It is when we promote the wellbeing of every single person in this town. Our township is on the operating table. This plan is not the cure. I urge you to reject it and get it right. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Michelle Castellino, Valley Way. Also a member of Town Council. So I wasn't going to speak tonight because as you all know, this is probably the first time I've ever spoken at a planning board meeting the past 10 years. I feel very strong that you're a separate entity. You do your thing. We do ours. I also, in this situation, uh, is always a little bit skeptical to speak because of all the lawsuits that we have pending, unfortunately. And my, my colleagues got up and spoke and they were passionate. So I'm going to keep my remarks very short and sweet. My niece just closed on her house. Took her two and a half years to find one. My son took a year and a half to find a home. And it wasn't easy. They were stressed out because as we all know, and many of you in the audience, our young kids are not getting homes, homes, single family homes. Can they find an apartment affordable? Maybe not. But there are apartments all over the place as we could see as the plan reads today. Single family homes needed to be incorporated in this plan. And it's a shame that they are not. Between Ronald Terrace and Kent's Place, Redwood School area, there should be single family homes there. It fits right in the makeup of the area. Few years ago, developer came to us looking to put a high rise apartment on Rock Spring Road, uh, on West Road where there was only four homes. And that's how it was explained to us. Well, there's only four homes here. We walked the property and said, I wouldn't do that to these folks because if I lived there, would I want a high rise in my backyard? And as you sit here tonight and all the decisions that you have to make and sleep upon, those those, you have to have that thought process. You really have to think about what you're doing here. I grew up in this town. I grew up on Pleasant Valley Way, across the street from Burger King. It used to be a Friendly's. There was a couple, uh, single-family homes that my mom rented when we first came to town. And we all know how that has changed. So again, I'm not here to influence you, but take your time, because I've been in your seat and, you know, you have to sleep at night and make sure that you make the right decision here. And you could take your time with it. I know we're pressed, and I know that we have all these lawsuits pending, but they're already here. We have a new attorney that the council hasn't even had the opportunity to sit and have a chat with. That's coming the next week or two. So we don't even have an opinion from him yet on where we should go with all of these cases. So again, I, I'm not gonna, you know, tell you what to do this evening, other than to really dig in your heart and into your thoughts and think about it. Can your kid go out and find a home easily today and get a single-family home? I hope they could, so try to help them. Thank you.
Seth Weisler, I just wanna, wanna say that I don't think we should put these decisions off into individual applications that will come months from now. That's what we seem to do with every plan. This is a plan. It's a planning board. We missed the deadline. There's other, we got into this pickle somehow, but we need to plan. And I think, uh, I'd like to just thank everyone for their time that you put into this. But we need a more balanced and creative approach to meet our housing needs in this town of West Orange. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Just have one final question, um, just based on the document that was provided. Um, on each of the different proposed sites, it mentions the 30-year expiration for affordability requirements. Um, there are expirations. These are not in perpetuity affordable. Um, so, but some of them don't have those listed. I just wanna know, are all of these proposed sites with the 30-year affordability requirement? Because they're not all explicitly listed in the document, and if they're not, could you please, just for transparency's sake, walk us through how certain ones were allotted to be the 30 years and others weren't? I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
I think some of them are already in existence, and those are the 30-year deed restrictions. The new amended Fair Housing Act now has a 40-year, depending on, depending, there's certain qualifications there. But the new ones are a 40-year deed restriction. That's what it has to be.
Okay, so when they're not listed, we should assume it means 40?
You will, there are certain ordinances that are affordable housing ordinances that the township has. They are going to have to be amended.
Right.
Okay, so that's when-
So I'm asking, in the proposal, it says some are specifically 30, and then there's others that don't have anything. What should we interpret the missing ones as?
You should interpret the missing ones that if they aren't already have a deed restriction on them, that they would then have to comply with the new regulations when they are ultimately amended and part of the ordinance.
By our town?
Yes.
So we don't know what they would be currently?
Some of them are already in place.
The blank ones we're saying though aren't.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're operating under, we'll come back to it later?
No, you're not coming back to it later. There are ordinances that are going to have to be amended based upon the amended Fair Housing Act that will have to comply with the Fair Housing Act, one of which is the deed restriction and the length of the deed restriction.
Understood. Thank you.
Do any members of the board have any more discussion before we vote? Mayor McCartney. Just asking. Anything else you'd like to say?
Well, um, guess what I'd like to say, what I just heard from public comment, is that we need to preserve uh, as much as we can. And I think in many cases, we have always attempted to do that with every application. These properties, correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of the properties, well, all of the properties that are in this plan are privately owned. They are all projects that have already come before, uh, as conceptual plans, before either a review process. They've all come before, um, the planning office to be reviewed. So we know that they're already on the horizon, literally Pleasant Valley Way. Uh, we did amend it to move them, to move some to Main Street. Um, we still do have 22 acres that the township owns on Main Street, um, behind the Thomas Edison National Historic Park. The council bifurcated that plan. We're looking, we're still looking to put 10 uh, film production studios on 10 of those acres, and the other 10 acres, the council, we have already looked at a plan. The council has already looked at a residential plan. So there is potential for even more development on Main Street, which is what I heard, uh, with the existing infrastructure that's there and close to transportation, repurposing what's already there. The other properties are not for sale. And if we are going to look at open space, the Open Space Commission has approximately somewhere between $2 and $3 million. The properties are not for sale. And certainly, I don't think any of those properties that are listed here, if they were for sale, would go for $2 or $3 million. So if we're looking at the necessity of putting a mapping plan in place for $350,000 or more, or to a million dollars, that seems to be a necessity. I don't think, I can't imagine that the council is going to bond to preserve a bond to preserve additional properties, and again, that are not for sale. So it's a quandary. It really is. Yes, we do wanna preserve as much as we can, but when the sites are not for sale, they're already in the plan as potential development. We'll do what we can as planning process. I do appreciate the comment that was made about coming to any planning board application. If you see any application, to voice your opinion, to come so that we can hear what needs to be heard. I, I, I don't, I don't know what to say as far as preservation, because they are privately owned.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
I'm gonna pass for now.
Okay. Ms. Capfer?
Um, I, I don't really have much to say. I do really appreciate everyone who made the time to come out here and, and share your thoughts. Um, I think, um, it's a very complex issue as, um, as you can all imagine, I think that, um, there are issues. Um, I appreciate what Mr. Krakobiac said about, you know, encouraging us to look at the law and understanding it. I think it's, um, you know, some of the issues that maybe we all have with this is, it's maybe more issues with, um, with the law. Um, and, you know, how we can, as a township, comply, um, while, and provide affordable housing, which we all know is needed and we all want, um, while not, um, you know, ruining some of the things that make West Orange such a great place to live. So I, I don't think I share anything new. I know that many of you share, um, those feelings of, um, you know, being unsure how, how we address this obligation. Um, I will echo what many others have said about, you know, as much as possible, you know, encouraging development in the area of Main Street. Um, seems to make sense, you know, where we can do redevelopment, you know, in the ways that that is encouraged by this process, that we should take every opportunity to do that. I, I live in, you know, the Pleasantdale neighborhood, um, so I, I do share concerns about, um, you know, some of the properties. I, I'm glad that the 762 Pleasant Valley Way property was removed, but I do have some concerns about some of the others that are still in the plan. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Macarena?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank everyone for being here tonight, for members of the town council, members of the general public and our neighboring communities. It's very important to hear your voice and like someone said, that you should come going forward, come to the planning board meetings when applications come. So you really have an impact, so we really know how you feel. It's extremely, extremely important. Um, I like the way people now say, you know, we needed a development on Main Street. Well, 20 years ago, I see the same people here who fought against the development on Main Street, questioning, who was gonna move here to downtown Main Street? Who would like to live on downtown Main Street? And now I see these same people saying, okay, let's put the development down on Main Street. So those are kind of disheartening words when you hear how it benefits people. When you look at affordable housing, you know, when you talk to the general public, a lot of the people don't understand what affordable housing is. The first thing that comes to their mind is, it's for people. Section 8 housing. No, it's not. To get affordable housing in a town where, and it's based on a calculation. It's based upon an average of $71,000, and I don't think those people are poor, but they can't afford a down payment to a house. And you'd like to make affordable housing and welcome people into our wonderful community. Yes, we have to maintain the amount. We have to maintain what goes on for the township. It's increased responsibilities, education, you know, infrastructure. The whole, the whole thing comes into play. That's the way you have to look at it. But you have to sometimes take your personal feelings and put it into perspective of what it really means, of how the impact, and take yourself out of calculation. Yes, you are property owners. Yes, you have an investment in this wonderful community. You have children who go to our great school system. But you have to look at what the law says and how we can keep the township in compliance with the laws, because if we continue to fight it in not a productive, productive way, it's gonna come back to haunt us in legal fees. And then you can complain about some other expenses. But I really wanna thank you all. You enlighten people. You show people how you really care. You bring out the questions that need to be asked and should have been asked a long time ago. So I thank you, and I, you know, it, it makes me feel good that I'm, I'm part of a community that really, really cares. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Do you have any comments?
I, I do, and I also wanna thank everyone for their, uh, comments and questions. Um, first, uh, Ms. Gruehl, could you just briefly sort of get into the, the 20%, 10% math? Because I know what people are saying, right? There's the concept that there's an obligation of 660 units, and if you divide that by the 20% set aside that we wanna see, that's 3,300 units. And if you divide by 10%, it's 6,600 units, but there's also, if, if you could get to the point that there's, there's not really an expectation that 660 units are going, are possible to be, right? If you could sort of explain that a little, because I know that comes up a lot.
Okay. Um, there are a lot of different ways, as everybody knows, to address affordable housing. The traditional way is what's called inclusionary development, which it's a mix of, it used to be 15% rental, 20% sales, is of affordable. The remaining were our market units. So that's an inclusionary development, market and the affordable. But there are other options, and certainly, you know, the township over the years has taken advantage of those other options. There are, um, group homes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they tend to be 100%. They're bedrooms, and they tend to be on the very low income side. Um, there are, there are also, um, other types of 100% affordable um, that may be available. So when you mix all of that together, you know, you get, um, you get a number, and you get, and you try to address the 660, which you will not be able to do with only zoning. Um, and that's why what is normally the case is you also have the option of having a man, what's called a mandatory set-aside ordinance, where you capture affordable units if there is redevelopment, zoning board applications that are approved, those types of actions that the township may take, which it's their right to take. If they choose to, however, then there has to be affordable housing as part of it. Is it 660 times 5? That math tends to be a little misleading, I guess I would say. First of all, it's a 10-year period. Second of all, it's not 5 times 5, because you have other types of opportunities. Um, we did have in there certain, um, township-owned property where it could be potentially veterans' housing or a group home. So those are in there. That would be 100%. Um, so it's, it's hard to just look at those, those numbers and figure out. What you have to do, though, to the extent, is you have to provide what's called a realistic opportunity to have something happen on at least 25% or more of your obligation, of your unmet need obligation. Does that mean you go out there and you, you demand that private developers, um, develop? No, but you have to give them the realistic opportunity for that to happen. The zoning, whatever it may be, and that's the manner. If they don't take advantage of it, that is not within the responsibility of the municipality to make that happen. Again, it's a realistic opportunity. It's not going out there and saying, Mr. X, you must do this. Um, so it's, thank you for asking that.
Right, I, I wanna get across that, right, even COA or the remains of COA or whatever, there's no real expectation that 660 units could be built.
Uh, there is hope. I think Fair Share Housing Center-
There might be hope, but-
That that can, can happen. And again, it's a realistic opportunity. What used to be the case, and is no longer because of the amended Fair Housing Act, is what used to be the case, is many developed municipalities who just didn't have the land area um, were required, as you did, okay? You had a vacant land adjustment previously, not to zero, but you had one. Um, that you would, um, adopt an ordinance, which the township did, as a mandatory set-aside ordinance, and that's the manner in which you would capture those units. What the amended housing plan, or the amended Fair Housing Act did was instead of just providing that as the way to capture those units, you must rezone 25% of your obligation. Um, and, and you can do it by overlay, which is, you've done, certainly the township has done. Um, so you maintain your existing zoning, but you provide another option available that would require inclusionary development and the affordable piece. So that's what we're struggling with now. All municipalities are. 25, a minimum of 25% has to be re-zoned for that.
Okay.
Wow. Does that help?
It, it does. Um, I guess my next question is, what's the practical effect of a project being in the plan as opposed to a project not being in the plan? How, how much of a, is it a blessing of some sort? Is it simply that because it's in the plan, the council is being asked to adopt a specific zoning ordinance for each parcel that would allow it to be built as proposed in the plan?
There is, um, there are different pieces to that. Um, number one is, if it's in, it has to be in the plan, and it has to get okayed, um, by the courts for a settlement agreement. And for the courts to say, there's a judgment of repose, that the municipality has addressed its obligation under the regulations that are currently in existence. That's what the township did in their prior round, in their third round. They had a judgment of repose. And there were sites, as you well know, and it's in the plan, you know, there were sites that were part of it. And the courts blessed the plan. The courts also, as part of it, is you have to implement those, that plan through zoning. And that was another piece to that. You couldn't just have your plan and then not implement it through your zoning. Because without the zoning, there is no regulatory requirement that anybody does anything. And again, as we talked about, every, every application has to come ultimately back to here, even if it's owned for it. It has to come back to here for you to evaluate it, um, under zoning and good planning. Um, so that's-
So, so it sounds like council somewhat has a gun to its head about approving the zoning. So it, so it sounds like council somewhat has a gun to its head about approving the zoning. And then we have the charge to determine if what comes to us meets the zoning.
I would say, as the council member over there.
So much freewheel.
But certainly there is some pressure on the council.
Yeah. All right, I think my other question is for Ms. McGovern, and that's, are we able to approve a plan with conditions, with amendments on it, the same way that we are with projects that come to us that put conditions on it? Or is it just, or is it more the promise of future changes?
What you're looking at tonight is approved. It's not, an amendment would come later. It's not like what we do with a resolution where we then add conditions. So you're looking at this for an approval tonight. If you're not comfortable with it, you want to vote no, that's your answer. If you want to in the future amend it, but you're okay with it now because you want to move this forward, then that's what, what we do. But it's not going to be amended tonight and voted on. The amendments would have to be done, and then you vote on the plan. So you, you take it as a whole. You don't do it with addendums to it tonight.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardozo.
Uh, yes, just to thank you to the public for coming out advocating, making your voices heard. As Ms. Caffrey noted earlier, these are complicated issues. And so much of what we do is that we deal in procedure. Um, so I know that can often feel frustrating. Um, hearing your perspectives directly adds a great deal of context to our deliberations, and the weight of the board's decisions is not lost on its members.
Thank you, Councilperson Scarp.
Yes, I want to say thank you to everyone for coming out. I share many, many of your concerns. This plan is a missed opportunity to develop our downtown, and it overburdens Pleasant Valley Way infrastructure, traffic, and our schools. It lacks strategic vision and an opportunity for positive impact for all of our township residents. We need a plan that would strengthen our tax base and facilitate business development throughout our town, particularly on Main Street. The plan is a gift to developers with only a sprinkling of affordable units among mass overdevelopment of apartment buildings, not even homes to be purchased. I'm not a planner, but this seems like common sense. So I spoke with a number of architects and planners to get their opinion. And I looked carefully at what Mr. Jordan Grayson had sent to us. And I want to quote, he's, I agree with him. He said, "We need to view affordable housing as an opportunity." And I agree. And he said that we need a strategic vision. And I'd like to read to you what he wrote. "The need for strate, for strategic vision," and I'm quoting, "While the current affordable housing plan identifies specific development, it lacks an overarching strategic framework. Building thousands of units without a coordinated plan risks straining infrastructure and missing the chance to create localized density, the kind that fosters walkable communities, economies of scale, and sustainable economic growth. A strategic affordable housing plan and development plan would ensure that every project contributes to cohesive, livable, and an economically vibrant West Orange." And then he does go on to talk about, um, the opportunities that we have. He likes, would like to see transit-oriented mixed-income housing within walking distance to the train station, and would like to see some development around the Valley Corridor and the Highland Avenue train station. He, and I agree with him totally here. He believes that thoughtful zoning updates that permit well-scaled four- and, and five-mix-story use buildings would be important. Affordable housing generated with market units, vibrant ground floor retail with local cafes and cultural spaces, and zoning incentives for sustainable design and energy-efficient constructions. And he goes on to recommend next steps, which I, I think are feasible. He, he, one is feasibility and scenario planning, targeted rezoning and analysis, which I will desperately needs to be done, and our master plan needs to be looked at, and community engagement and feedback. And too often, as we've seen here, the community doesn't have appropriate engagement and feedback. In fact, I think it's unconscionable that we've given our residents only three minutes to speak in something as important as this. Um, I, I think, I want you to just ask yourself this question, and my colleagues as well. Do you want our town to become a city of apartment dwellings? Or do we want to preserve the beautiful suburban township we live in? I know which I choose, and I urge all of you to think clearly about this as you make your decisions. Um, last week, I spoke with seniors from our new West Orange senior building who were afraid to come out for an event because they would not be able to get a parking space when they return home. This is no way to approach property development for our seniors or for any of our residents, and our planning board needs to do better. I wish we would sit down with Mr. Grayson and our new attorney, who has expertise in this area, and come up with something a little bit better.
Thank you. Captain Louberini.
First off, I'd like to thank the other board members for their really thoughtful and, um, different viewpoints and engagement and commitment to this process. Uh, my first time being on a planning board, and it should, uh, it should go a lot.
Welcome.
But part of it. Uh, my second thing was to thank the public for their, their passion, their engagement, and their time spent also reviewing all the documents. Your viewpoints carry a lot of weight, and, um, if it's important to hear them. So thank you. That's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah. Mr. Wilks.
No, nothing additional. Everything's been said.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the public here and Mayor McCartney.
You may go if you like. All right, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. Um, I, our numbers are astronomical. We all realize that. The numbers are astronomical. And I just feel like I want to reassure people that those numbers include five golf courses that we have in town. And our golf courses are zoned residential. They are zoned, single-family homes are one. So that in our zoning plan would be considered potential development. The reason I put the Rock Spring Golf Course in a Green Acres application was to preserve it, just as I believe Councilwoman Castellino referred to at Rock Spring. There, there was a developer looking to propose 190, uh, units on that space. No one on the council at that time appreciated that. And as mayor, I initiated the Green Acres application. So we, so we can preserve that. That could have been 1,293 units on, um, Rock Spring. The other golf courses, again, we have other golf courses that add up to those numbers because they are zoned residential and are listed as potential development. So I was asked to challenge those numbers. I did not challenge those numbers because that's a fact. Uh, Susan Gruehl talked about realistic development. What's in the plan right now is what I've been saying, is that these are privately owned properties. They've already come to us. They're all, these developers are already looking. I appreciate what Councilwoman Scarp is saying, but I don't know how you're going to do that. And how are you going to preserve that, uh, as, as you're suggesting? Uh, a few times, there is a resident that did come to a council meeting. Uh, Councilwoman Scarp quoted him, Councilwoman Rudens quoted him. I followed up with him. He is an architect. He is very willing to help with us. What you quoted, I did follow up with him and had a nice conversation with him and exchanged emails, that what you quoted is what he would like to see in the RFQ that goes out for a planner. That's what he quoted. What he didn't understand was that the planning board over the past 20 years, um, again, you mentioned smart growth. On our Central Avenue, we had buildings that had been abandoned and vacant. The Harvard Press properties had been abandoned for over 50 years, 70 years. All of that has been redeveloped for some are market value, some are affordable housing, right there next to the Highland Avenue train station. So that is all in the works. Uh, we're trying to do the same thing on Lakeside Avenue. I mentioned that before with the 22 acres that we have over there. So we're doing what we can with what we have, um, as we try to develop this town um, in the most, I don't know what the word is, the most feasible. Uh, preserve what we can, where we can. I, I, I really truthfully don't, I didn't come to argue with my council colleagues, but when you mentioned putting units somewhere and on sites that don't exist, I don't, I don't see how we're going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess that's...
I want to thank every member of the public that's here and everybody on Zoom who's watching. Your comments did not go unnoticed because we're here for a second meeting. First time around, we did listen. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned, this is a 10-year plan. This is not in the next six months, we have to get it done. There is opportunity over 10 years to have other architects, other people, other areas, Main Street, the Valley, every other area of town we will look at. Who knows who's going to come to us in a year that will add to these numbers? And we're going to do our best. And the state also knows that it is impossible to do everything, as Mayor McCartney identified. They look at our golf courses and add them in to the overall number. So there's going to be a little give on both sides. The other thing for the members of the public who came up and spoke about another project that's before the planning board, please, everybody else in the room, you have to understand that is not in this project. So there's a mixed message going on here that the public must understand that was in the third round, and that is before the planning board in another application. So the two applications are totally different, okay? So we have to have that in mind. We have to look at the law and exactly what's going on here. And that's what the planning board has to judge. So we're looking at one applicant, one application tonight for the affordable housing. Uh, other things are on other applications that the planning board's going to hear. I just want to make that very clear. To that end, uh, does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I'd like to put before the planning board a motion to accept the, um, stage four plan submitted by, um, board and for a consideration by the planning board to yes or no, the acceptance of the plan as submitted, then to send to the township council for their advice and consent.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cardozo's seconds. Yamalet, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Yamalet on the motion.
Mr. Alper?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Norberlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
No.
Councilwoman Scarp?
No.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bago?
Yes. Could you please tell us how many As and how many Ns?
Five yeses and three nos.
Okay, the motion passes.
Norberlin?
Oh. She's, uh, the whole in it.
Oh.
Oh, we wasn't supposed to vote.
We're missing Chris Owen.
Too many votes.
That's the one.
Right.
All right.
Right.
Why do we come up with eight when we should have nine?
John should have...
Me.
Well, John should have voted.
10. Somebody shouldn't have voted?
No, John shouldn't have. I counted. Six, seven, eight. I counted only eight voted, and we should have had nine voting because one of our regular members was... But Mr. Morian only votes when Miss Mayor McCartney is not present. Wasn't that... Oh, okay. I got it. Okay. Yes. Yes. You still should have been...
Okay. We adopt the resolution, we send this up to the town council. Thank you very much, everybody. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Vote.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're back from our break. PB 24, they show one West Essex Highlands Incorporated Block 179 Lot 32 Zone IH1 Warner Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 496 unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120 acre property in the northwest corner of the township of New Jersey. And we now have our expert, Diane, you want to swear her in? Thank you, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I'm upstaging you.
Sorry, I was a presentation. When he came up, I'm on my list. Uh, I'll hear you, sir. Hey, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
My name is Samuel N. Kleinberg. I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of New Jersey.
Could you give us a little bit of your background, sir? And that is your license as a professional engineer active in the state of New Jersey at this time?
It is active in the state of New Jersey at this time. I graduated from Stevens Institute in 1973. I've been, I have a master's degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1980. And I specialize in soil mechanics and foundation engineering.
And who do you work for now, sir?
I work now for CME Associates, who work consultants to the planning board.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions? No, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, and the purpose of our services, as we understand this particular task, was to review both the applicant's engineers' report and the objectors' engineers' report and assist the planning board with an opinion as to the validity of the statements in each report. We went through the development plans in focusing on the area of Building D, which is on the top of slope, of the slope that's in question at this time. The subsurface investigation was performed by the applicant's engineer Langen Engineering. And the explorations on the slope, which are to the east, primarily to the east of Building D, were done by Langen. The applicant also did investigations for the best management practices, the stormwater infiltration systems. They were done by an engineering firm called Shore Engineering. And we also, because their explorations were in the same area, we reviewed the results of their explorations as well. We reviewed the calculations and I
Did you provide a report to the board?
Sorry?
Did you provide a report to the board?
Yes, yes, we did. It's a report of October 28, 2025. And I was the principal author of the report.
Go right ahead, sir.
The subsurface conditions on the slope were characterized by Langen Engineering for the applicant. Our review, based on review, the geologic mapping indicates that their findings conform to the superficial geology as indicated on the USGS maps for this area. And that is, means the sands and the dense sands, the medium dense sands and the topsoil layers that were described in the report. The, we found that Langen had characterized the bedrock formation under the site as being uniform under the site and being related to the basalt formation. Actually, the basalt formation ends near the middle of the site. And so the rock changes, the bedrock changes from basalt to sandstone when you get to the middle of the slope, roughly around where the sewer easement for, that the township has there, runs across the site just about at the boundary between the basalt, the harder rock and the sandstone. The site was included, as is shown in the Langen report, in a landslide hazard study for Essex County. And there was a zone map for that area. We were unable to find, while the mapping is shown, and in the Langen report, it's shown to be very close to the building in the area of investigation. But while the mapping is shown, it appears to relate to the sandstone formation, which is about the middle of the slope, not up near the top of the slope where most of the explorations were concerned. Were concerned. And we were unable to determine, to get the basis of the classification as a landslide hazard. We anticipate it's due to possibly higher groundwater level and seepage levels that could be close to the ground surface. So, so in the conclusion, the Langen did do an investigation that included, assuming, while they were unable to identify groundwater in their explorations on the downhill slope, they didn't reportedly didn't encounter and they don't, and it's their opinion that it doesn't occur. They did assume a groundwater level at the top of the decomposed rock, which is about, on their mapping, about two feet above that mapping. And those, and the stability analyses that were performed for that case didn't indicate that there was a significant impact on stability. They have contacted our firm after reviewing this report. And they indicate that they do have analyses that assume a conservative groundwater level near the surface. But we haven't seen those results at this time. The, the two consultants differ in the interpretation. I think that the objectors' principal concerns were that the descriptions of conditions encountered primarily in the test fits did not address modeling. And I think the applicant's engineers' reports say that they didn't, they don't describe modeling because they didn't notice any modeling in their explorations. That's our understanding of the response in the Langen rebuttal report. The, the, both of the consultants differ in their categorization of the strength of the bedrock. Langen, and that's based on something called the geological strength index for the rock. This is a highly empirical tool that's used to enable to enable an engineer to provide input into the currently, the current state of the art computer software. It doesn't necessarily indicate what happens, but what actually would happen where a slope failure surface would pass through the rock. In the Princeton Hydro, writing for the objectors, were the opinion that a very low strength index should be used. And they did perform analyses using their stability index. It's our opinion that was prudent to use the lower strength index. The complicating factor is that while they did use the lower strength index, the safety factor came out to be something like 1.7, which we in our practice would be considered to be adequate. So that that particular zone of slope evaluation where the failure surfaces pass through the bedrock, even though if you really downgrade the strength of the rock, you still come up with an adequate safety factor, stability. And based on most of the references, the Princeton Hydro references an Army Corps of Engineers standard for, for very very large engineering projects actually built on bedrock slopes. And it's for structures like major dams, structures where the failure would result in a catastrophe. You know, multiple, multiple deaths on, you know, in the downstream channel below the dam if the structure was to fail. That criteria is not in our, in our experience or in our opinion appropriate for this particular analysis case. So we have two consultants doing stability analyses. One consultant using a program called Slope W, which is a high-powered conventional software program for doing this analysis. And Princeton Hydro used a program called Slide, which is also an equally competent tool to use. And they both come out with safety factors that exceed 1.5 for multiple cases. And so it was our conclusion that the, that the the studies both indicate that the, that none of the analyses performed indicate that there is an unstable condition in the slope. And yet you have this USGS mapping of a slope, a potential slope hazard at the site. Our first impression based, now it's classified as a hazard class B3 and for slopes that were up to 15 degrees from inclined from the horizontal. The upper slope on this site is inclined at slope angles between 20 and 30 degrees. And so our first impression was the mapping was in error. But I think it's just that due to the small, that they were talking about the sandstone slope, that that's the lower half of the slope. And it's probably due to the effect that if groundwater rose into it, the cemented sands might weaken based on the influence of the groundwater. And if you get a condition called, what was called a simplified infinite slope condition, in other words, the groundwater flows just parallel to the slope. It's established that that would be the controlling safety factor. And basically, when you have groundwater, if you do not have groundwater through the slope, then the infinite slope is what I guess would be conventionally called the angle of repose. In other words, if you poured sugar out of a jar, it would form a certain slope. And that would be the angle of repose. The theory is that when groundwater rises up to the level of the top of the slope and then begins to flow downhill towards that, that the stable slope reduces to about half of what would ordinarily be the angle of repose. And then more complicated is called the angle of internal friction. It's a much more complicated phenomenon than the angle of repose. But in order for the soil to fail, there's a thing called a friction angle, which is roughly related to the angle of repose. And so, and so the, but the analyses performed by both consultants, both indicate safety factors at 1.5 or better, so that doesn't indicate the slope. But the hazard report may be considering that on the lower slope, the groundwater would rise into the slope and could lead to landslides. That's our, we could not find a geological report in time for this meeting that would explain why the hazard classification was made. It's just our opinion of what it probably is. We had felt that the that the analyses did not that that the analyses that did not uh that that we had seen in the reports did not address extreme heavy rainfall events where where these they these slope conditions typically advise. And we uh and we we recommend we recommend that they they do that. Uh Langen engineer uh as of day reported that that analysis was included, but they didn't include the out the output presentation. And and so uh and and so that should be provided so so that we, you know, that we could see and we would be, it would it would, if if the analyses proceed into the lower slope, if you assume that the groundwater is at the surface, the slopes are with the safety factors might reduce to below one point five. But we haven't seen those those analyses. Um we uh in in reviewing the plans, uh we we noted that that um there are two best management practice infiltration basins at the at the building location. And so the purpose of the infiltration basins is to is to ma- mound the groundwater during a high rainfall event and infiltrate at least. Uh I think the the I I'm not, I I don't do hydraulic uh this type of design analysis work. Uh and so but but say is they they have to, they have to show that they infiltrating water they uh based on a uh uh an assigned storm, a low-level storm. And they and they have to prove that they can infiltrate that much. The problem here is that for for uh for slope stability, you you don't want to be introducing uh introducing more groundwater uh at the at the top of the slope. And so we recommended that they that the um that the applicants and and the applicant's engineer or the applicant instructs engineer to evaluate the potential for the infiltration at that particular location to be detrimental to the stability of the easterns, the eastern slope. Um uh the there was a good deal of discussion in in the reports as to the im- the impact of the construction on the stability. In other words, everything that was included in the, well, no, I have to correct myself. There there were factors, at least for the bedrock, where where they have disturbance factors, where they're supposed to assume a certain disturbance influence from the that the uh let's say, if if blasting is required, that that would change the character of the bedrock, the joint. It might introduce more fractures and create a different situation that was included in the in in the analysis. Uh so there were there were two effects. There's the effect of the the construction uh for the building, which involves excavations of up to twenty-three feet uh and removal of bedrock that that to that depth. And then there's the the stormwater infiltration. These are effects that 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 should be evaluated. Uh we included at the conclusion of the report some rec- that that if if the the application is proved to move forward, that 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 any approval should clear include a number of provisions that should be made to 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 en- ensure that that the stability of the slopes are monitored during during the construction and and we've made specific recommendations. I I can go through.
Go right ahead.
Uh the um the 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 uh the clearing of the site should be should be controlled and maintained within the limits that are indicated on the on this on the site plan and should it should not be done carelessly so that it impacts the the uh the the uh the wooded area that is that is required to be maintained on 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 the entire east eastern slopes, that there's no effects on that. Um there should be requirements for long-term maintenance of the the health of the 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 wooded area on the slope. It's our understanding there's a mandated requirement to maintain the woods on the sloping sloping uh on 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 the eastern slope. And even even long after development, we have, where I live, we have a number of species that are endangered like parasites and that sort of thing. So there should be some provisions for maintenance, maintenance of the the forest. Uh the uh the soil erosion uh and sediment control plan should provide specific de- details for protection of the ridge and slope. That's uh uh in particular discharge of de-watering for uh from the excavation should be uh should not be not be discharged over the slope and um should be discharged in with all of the requirements that are ordinarily included in a soil erosion uh uh then sediment control plan. Uh surcharges resulting from the excavation, in other words, piles of earth. Heavy, very heavy equipment operating, operating on the slope. Uh they uh they they should not not operate immediately on the slope for the east of where the building is situated, on the slope side of the struggle. There should be provisions to keep all equipment and and stockpiles away from the top of the slope. Um they, what what we ordinarily do when when we're specifying projects uh for capital improvement plans for towns, we require that the uh that before any excavation begins, that the uh that the contractor provide a uh and an excavation and de-watering work plan. The uh that uh describing in detail what what uh the methods that they are going to employ, what the limits are and they and they should be reviewed. Uh usually, we require that to be done by an engineer retained by the earthwork contract. And these and this engineer would look at uh uh criteria for blasting that in particular and and heavy rock excavation. Um. We yet we we recommend there's gonna be excavation between, I guess, ten or twelve feet to about twenty-five feet in the building, the area. Um the ex- the excavator ordinarily, if there are not um if if there is not a need to protect protect structures alongside the excavation, the developer will, uh I mean, the contractor would cut, let the cut the slope back, so it so it falls back. But if they do that in this particular case on the eastern side of the building, that would disturb the rock on the uh at the top of the slope and that should and and that shouldn't be permitted. Supportive excavation systems uh that might even include rock bolting or uh or tiebacks, tieback systems uh should be employed for excavations for the building because of its proximity to the top of the slope. Um I uh as as we had mentioned, uh they shouldn't allow the, in other words, if there are layover times and there's rainfall and water collects in the bottom of the excavation, that would infiltrate, could infiltrate into the bedrock and and reduce and and have stability impacts on the lower slope. So the excavation has to be de-watered at all times. We recommend, because there are concerns from the residents that uh that 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 there there would be slope slope movements over, we recommend that the uh that the moni- monitoring program include the installation of of what's called slope indicators. These are tubes that will, that if the slope moves, the tubes uh go go through a curvature and and you could tell if the slope, if and when the slope is beginning to move or if it has moved and it would be a benefit, I think, to the applicant. If he if he has a long-term record at during the construction as to whether there is or never was any slope movement, it would be his benefit to consider doing that. Um uh we think that groundwater monitoring wells should be installed because uh it's very difficult to determine where the actual groundwater level is in the bedrock. There could in this case be uh at least two groundwater levels. There would be groundwater level on the interior of the site where the wetlands exist currently. And that could be due to a perch condition on the bedrock, which is which is likely to be permeable. The sandstone, which underlies the the basalt bedrock at 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 depth at depth with that have not been determined. Um that is considered inadequate for it's a and and so water does occur in it and 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 it can move through it. So so that we think we think that groundwater monitoring wells should be put there so that we could determine. And so so the applicant could demonstrate that uh the whatever mitigating measures are are applied to the uh um the uh the stormwater infiltration system, which which we recommend that 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 the applicant's engineer address that is as part of the approval process. Um and then uh the final grading should strictly be performed to ensure that the runoff is intercepted and prevented from uh from running off over the slope. And that was pretty much a summary of what we were recommending that they, that I I don't know who's empowered to apply these uh these requirements, but but these are these are the requirements that we think should be incorporated in the approvals.
Is there anything in your recommendation that should be done before the board continues its approval process?
Well, I think the 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 uh the is the review of the infiltration basin concept concept and and whether the mounding would would affect, that that should be done. Uh I uh it's it's possible, it would be beneficial to in in store wells to actually determine what the groundwater level is. I would suggest maybe in the vicinity of Langen's borings, uh I think it's two and four, which are about and which they're two and four apparently uh uh was were perform, appear to have been performed uh beyond the the basalt formation and and they're they're in the area that was identified in in the um in the in the hazard report that was produced by them.
So Princeton Hydro did four borings and they came up with modeling and Langen did a hundred and came up with nothing in your in your opinion.
I'm I'm not aware that Princeton did any boring.
I'm sorry.
Offsite.
They do what?
Offsite, no.
Or they're offsite, but around the around the uh exterior of the site.
Okay, I I'm sorry, we did, we didn't, I I didn't pick that up in the report. I'm uh if I missed missed it, you know, uh we we can give, go back and check that. But I didn't see any explorations where actually done done by them.
Is it possible to have an area like this? We, well, let me ask you a question. As an expert, you think that there is groundwater infiltration in this area?
I think there is some. Uh and whether it would develop a uh would be develop a a uh a fully submerged condition so that that pressure spilled up. The other problem you have with that joint jointed bedrock is that the joints, for instance, uh there's bedrock, let's say at elevation six hundred near the top of the slope or or even higher. And um sometimes in bedrock, the the there will be faults or or open open joints. And what happens if water opens, it enters the joint at a higher elevation and there's a continuous supply of water, that acts as a as a kind of a short circuit down slope. And so that that joint fills up all the way down the slope. And so a point down the slope was suddenly, you know, or or would, there would be a buildup. So that point down the slope is feeling a water pressure that could be equivalent to twenty or thirty feet of slope because of the amount of topography. And that that could be enough to initiate uh a a a a slope, a slope failure problem. And that's kind of things that do show up in heavy, heavy rainfall events.
Would you expect to see modeling somewhere in bor- in borings on this mountain?
Uh the um I think the the report, if if there was, if there was ground groundwater present, it's likely that you would see, you would see modeling, mo- modeling. Um the uh um the Langen specifically states that they they did not see, they looked for it and they they say they looked for it and they didn't see it. Um both of their engineers used a um what's a general engineering color classification in their descriptions of uh of conditions. Princeton Hy- Hydro indicates that the 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 DEP regulations re- require the use of what's called a Muntzow color chart, which involves, you have to, you have to take a a really careful look at the colors and there's different shades being different things, the modeling. There the lots don't i- indicate that any of that was noted. And I I I think it's Langen's contention that they that it wasn't present.
Is modeling important to know if you're building on this site?
My my modeling is is a phenomenon that occurs where there's a pers- persistent water level and and usually the water level varies over the season. And it rises, it's usually the water levels are maximum uh in eight, around the end of March and April because the trees are are still dormant and or were about to be are about to start drawing water. But be before they 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 enter that state, there there's nothing, nothing drawing groundwater out of the ground because the vegetation is not active. And so that represents the highest water level that would occur in the year. And so if you're doing test bits at any specific time and you do notice modeling, the the modeling, does it, the the elevation that modeling occurs would define the groundwater level that would be assumed to be the seasonal high water table.
Would that be important to your calculations or your estimations of safety?
Uh that way, you would ordinarily assume water levels that that would be at the seasonal high water table uh in in your stability analysis. Now, uh in their in in their contact with us after reading this report, Langen indicates that they they do have stability cases that address that. We haven't seen them yet.
But there's more things for you to see, in what, there's there are more things for you to see to make a more accurate opinion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, um Mayor McCartney.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kleinerberg?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have questions, but I first I want to say thank you for your analysis of this and in your delivery, because I actually understood everything that you said. Though I do have questions, but the delivery was explained very nicely, so thank you very much. Um just go back to the beginning a little bit, uh where you had mentioned with the Langen report, uh the bedrock where the basalt, that there are sanitary sews uh sewer that runs between the basalt and the sandstone.
I'm sorry, the.
That the sanitary sewer runs between the basalt and the sandstone.
It is is that it appears that um there there is a wh- what what happens, the what what happened is the, it was originally only sandstone. And then and then and Jurassic, the Jurassic, this volcanic material came through puts the sandstone apart. And so what we're looking at with the basalt is right where the basalt ended, when the the volcanic uh flow ended. And so there's sandstone underneath it, and if you go farther farther to the west, there'd be sandstone over it. And then you have this same cycle repeating in the in the um first, this is the second Watchong Mountain. At the first Watchong Mountain, um where there are some slope problems. Um uh that that that's a second intrusion of the basalt and then there's sandstone to the east of that.
But it it seems to me that what you're saying is that they're avoiding the basalt, so you would not want to disturb the basalt.
Uh with the sewer, well, it it may have been in, let's say, that the sandstone is much easier to excavate than than the basalt.
Right.
Uh and you you and and that may have been the reason for the location of the the easement. for the location of the, the easement at that location. But we don't, we didn't review the plans for, for the um, for the sewer, for the existing sewer.
I had a question about, you referred to one point seven as a safety and that would be adequate. So on a scale or rating, where is one point seven? Um, you, you know, adequate is?
Okay, well, well, one point seven is a result that, that Princeton Hydro, just to be clear, uh, was, it was a value for a, a, a slope failure surface that passed through the bedrock. And then a low value, a low value safety factor of one point seven. And the way the safety factor is defined, uh, you have a, a lot of the failure service is shown as, as circles. And so, and so what the driving force is the weight inside the circle. The resisting force is the sheer resistance along the base, along the circumference of the circle. And so one point seven means that the, the, uh, the material has about seventy percent more strength than would be required to prevent, to, to to just reach equilibrium at, at, at the slope. So, so that means that, um, and, and they used a, a very, uh, a, 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 a GSI value, geologic strength uh, index that, that uh, was very low. It's for a very poor, poor quality rock. And, and, and even when they did that, for that particular failure surface, it still had seventy percent more, more strength than was required. The convention, uh, as, as for, for, well, I, I think it's even referred to in the Corps of Engineers manual for ordinary slopes. In other words, where you're not putting a dam or founding a, a, a large retaining wall on rock and that sort of thing. The convention is that, that one point five is, would be the safety factor. And there's fifty percent more strength than you need. Um.
So what are the more or less on that? Like, if this is adequate, what is better?
Well, Princeton, Princeton Hydro referred to a, a, a statement in a, uh, in a Corps of Engineers manual for, uh, rock found, uh, for structures constructed on rock and, and it also included recommendations for slopes. And these are for things like, uh, large, for a Corps of Engineers projects would be large dams, uh, military works and and, and things, or things that, that if they fail, could produce catastrophic results. And so a safety factor of two would definitely be justified in that case. Uh, but for uh, this slope, and I would say if building D was going to be built on the slope, then the, then the, but it's not. Uh, and, but if it was getting built on the slope, then maybe that kind of a safety factor would be required. But the construction here is just, just to the west of the crest of the ridge. And, and um, they, they have demonstrated that the, the influence of the structure uh, wouldn't ex, wouldn't extend onto the slope. Uh, and it's safety, they computed safety factors with the building in place and, and, uh, and, and for, and compared it to safety factors under existing conditions. And there wasn't much of a change to the influence of the building.
Okay. Uh, in your recommendations, you said that um, soil erosion, protection of the slope? How would you, how do you install that? And what does that actually mean?
Basically here, you would, you would be sure that the grading during construction didn't permit any flow of, of any runoff from the top of the slope.
Um, so my other question was, um, that you also mentioned that they should place slope indicators, slope indicators?
Indicators.
So if they do bend, as you referred, what happens? What's the, what is the implication of that?
Well, the implication is as you, well, uh, we anticipate, uh, anticipate that um, or at least it should be anticipated in the review of this project that blasting will be required to, to uh, excavate twenty-three feet of rock on, on, on the one, one end of the building. Um, and so that, uh, and, and so this excavation work plan that we recommend be required. Uh, they, uh, they would have to do an evaluation on, on uh, how much char, charge to do in each, each blast. And that's usually dependent on uh, the distance to the, the thing, to the structure to be protect, protected. And ordinarily, you'd be looking at a, a residence nearby. And so the residences here are, are several hundred feet away from it. You wouldn't use several hundred feet in order to design the blasting charge. You would consider the slope to be the structure that's being protected. And you would, that, that distance ranges from about forty to a hundred feet. And so the, the design of the blasting program would have to, have to, uh, have to employ small charges that, and it would, uh, the excavation would proceed at a slower pace uh, because of that. But the, the, there would be vibration monitoring and the slope indicators would indicate, they would indicate, they indicate movement in uh, relative movement. In other words, you have a long shaft with a tube in it and you lower a, a probe in, the slope, it, it can reach back electronically. The changes in slope going up in that. And so over time, you would, if you had a problem, let's say that the, the part of the tube that's fixed in the rock would not move. But you would notice that the soil above the rock, you would see a big sweep in, in, in the curve. It would show us movement. It would be everybody's benefit, I think, to employ these devices so that you would check during the excavation and you could demonstrate uh, at the end of construction that, uh, we did that, and, and, and and hopefully it would indicate that there was negligible movement. And that would be, that would be the only way you could tell whether there was or was not. Otherwise, it would, it would be grounds for argument. And if you did notice it, then you would have to modify the excavation plan.
That, that was what I was getting to. Yeah. That's where I was going. Uh, thank you. These seem like quite a bit of conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, the mayor got most of my questions. Uh, oh, you, you talked a little bit about land, so we're talking about landslide hazard. Uh, and the one point seven factor, things like that. So you're pretty confident that, well, let me ask you it this way. The slope right now, naturally, it could slide based on groundwater and all these other forces that are on it, just naturally, the way it's sitting there.
Uh, I, I think that's, that's, um, too simplistic.
Okay.
And it, it could slide, you know, uh, uh, but right, right now, what I'm saying is that the analyses that were performed, which did not include the most pessimistic groundwater analysis, don't indicate, they, they don't give an indication of what, that there is a problem with stability, in our opinion.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, but then you're faced with this mapping that was done by the USGS. And I think it concerns the area down the slope beyond the investigations that were performed. But, um, that we were unable to locate the uh, the basis for that particular classification. And it's pretty unique to that area. In other words, the Watchong Ridge continues north and south, and there were no areas mapped except at this location.
So the placement of that building, I think it's building D with the jog in it and the location to the top of the slope and the slope itself, how do you feel about that location? The distance from the top of the ridge, that imagine, or that ridge line, how far west it is of that?
Uh,
is it too close? Is it?
Uh, the analysis provided by Langen, uh, would, would indicate that, uh, it, it did not have a, as they located, it did not have a significant effect on the stability. In other words, the calculations with the building in place yielded the same sa- safety factor was the calculation.
Before the building gets put there. Okay, okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Ms. Capford, do you have any questions from Mr. Kleinberg on his testimony?
I do. Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Kleinberg. Um, one question regarding the slope stability analysis, you mentioned that um, that accounting for the heavy rainfall, the, the heavy rainfall is something that should be accounted for in the analysis? How, how does that, or if I understood you correctly, how does that change the analysis? Or, or how would you go about?
What, well, uh, the way, the way the groundwater works is if you, um, you, you, you assume a, a, a gra, uh, what's called a free attic surface, that's where atmospheric pressure occurs. And, and, uh, and down below that, then, then below that, you start to develop pressures that, that would get into the rock joints or, or that they lower the frictional resistance of the soil. In other words, friction is kind of weight times, uh, sandpaper or, or whichever. If I reduce the amount of contact pressure on, on, on a given surface, I do that by making the soil buoyant. And in some cases, you can build up excess pressures. For instance, if that particular location is connected by a rock joint, the groundwater level, which is sixty feet higher, you're going to build up a very high pressure there that could, it could even liquefy the soil if that occurred. We don't know that, that those joints exist, you know, but it, it's always a potential to be considered. There's nothing yet indicated in the record that they exist. They, uh, when the, the, when and if the building is excavated, they, they should have experts to characterize the bedrock that's exposed in the slopes and to check for, for uh, jointing systems that, that could lead to a problem and, and grab them or do something to mitigate the uh, uh, the, the possibility that water generated by the infiltration systems or, or otherwise would, would create one of those, of situations.
Thank you. And um, one question about the, the soil modeling. Um, how, how would you determine, uh, or how, how does one determine when that is present? Uh, you know, when you're, when you're out in the field doing soil testing?
I think it's explained in the Princeton Hydro report pretty much in, in detail. But you get blotches on that, uh, when you, when you look at the, the soil on the sides of, you dig, when the backhoe cuts in, it leaves a smooth surface a lot of time on the edge. And you can, and you could see patches of, uh, patches of gray in a certain area concentrated within a range of a couple of feet. And, and it, it, the, uh, the peo- people who are sent out to do these things are frequently, there's a training course that, that, that's given to, to identify the cut. And there's a, and there's a pretty rigorous method for describing the soil colors. Um, uh, um, the, the Langen boings, uh, the, the Langen test bits did just, just use what a, a more, um, a much less rigorous engineering color. In other words, brown, gray, this, and didn't, did not notice any particulars creations or blotches of, of, of materials in, in the test bit. Uh, so, and, and they, and I think in the rebuttal report, they contended that they weren't noted and, and that they weren't noted because there is not a groundwater condition on the slope.
Does, does the DEP require a certain um, analysis or, uh, I think there was a color chart that was referenced?
Yeah, the Muntzow color chart.
And, and is that what DEP requires when analyzing a soil boring for modeling?
Um, that, that's a, a standard that they apply. And it's mo- mostly, I think, when you talk about the DEP, it's for the um, for the, uh, the, the mitigation of the, uh, uh, for the, for the best management practices for it, you know, in order to assume, to assure that uh, groundwater is infiltration of groundwater, it, it models the current condition before development. But, but they reference that, that system in their standards.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much.
Vice Chairman Carina, do you have any questions, Mr. Kleinberg on his testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, thank you for being here tonight and your explanations. Is there anything out there, anything that you haven't received? Anything boring samples, tested, site evaluations? Are there any, is there any information that you do not have that would have a significant impact in your evaluation?
Uh, the, uh, the, Langen indicates that they are going to be providing, um, analyses for the, uh, uh, assuming that, that this groundwater level rises near to the, near to the surface. And they say that's forthcoming. So we should have that to review. And they should provide an analysis as, as to whether the the installation of infiltration systems at the top of the slope, uh, they, they assess the impact of those, uh, of those systems on the potential for influencing the stability of the slope.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Do you have any questions, Mr. Kleinberg?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Kleinberg. Um, in your recommendations on page nineteen, uh, the previous set that we didn't really talk about, uh, you didn't go through one by one at least. Um, your number six is that the applicant's engineer should propose and perform a stability evaluation using a conservative physiometric surface that would reflect the response of groundwater to heavy storm-induced rainfall. So is that something that we need to see?
That, that's what, and, and Langen indicates that they have done that. We just haven't seen the actual output of results and they say that's forthcoming.
Okay, good. Um, I think my other question isn't necessarily for you, but I might as well raise it now, even though it might be a bit of a can of worms. Um, the recommendation that long-term measures should be required to maintain the health of the forestry on the slope, which I think is a good recommendation. But that slope is in the deer fence area that isn't to be disturbed. Is that something that we can require? Does that need to open up something to get that done?
I think the condition of
Okay.
Approval, yeah.
I actually think all of the eleven recommendations could be implemented as conditions.
Yes.
All right. My concern simply being if, if you're allowed to require
Yes.
maintenance of trees within an area that's not supposed to be touched.
We have to get in agreement with that?
Yeah, yeah. Just for the record, the eleven conditions at the end of Mr. Kleinberg's report would be acceptable conditions to the applicant in the field. Uh, obviously, a lot of them are construction related. Uh, we have many different sources that we're bound by to follow post-approval activities. And we definitely would agree to make those eleven conditions required.
Thank you, Mr. Plock. Do you have anything else?
Um, just that I just wanted to be careful about it because in my head, you know, if there was a suggestion maybe from Mr. DeFeo that that area is to never be touched at all. If one of the requirements is essentially, listen, if trees start to die five years down the road, they've got to be replaced because the roots are so important to maintaining the soil, that that can be, A, should be done and that you'd be willing to do it, but B, that it's permitted to do it.
You talked about disease also.
Mayor McCartney.
He talked about disease too.
Sure.
If something were to happen.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Efron.
Yes, I just wanted to note, I appreciate Mr. Plock saying his client would agree to those as conditions of approval. We don't necessarily agree that they're only conditions of approval. We're going to study them and let, alert, alert the board to any position we have that they must be part of affirmative proofs. But I just want to note, we're reserving our position as to whether we agree that they're all conditions of approval, rather than things that reflect evidence that must be presented. We're simply reserving our position at this point.
So noted. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That was all I had.
Credoza, do you have any questions from Mr. Kleinberg?
No, my fellow board members have asked all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Pock.
Thank you. Counselperson, do you have any questions for Mr. Kleinberg on his testimony?
Yeah, I just have one question. Um, seeing this is not an exact science and, um, I get a sense that we need to be really thorough in our assessment. You talked about, um, during the excavation, that it has to be de-watered all the time. And, um, what if it isn't? What happens to that slope if it becomes unstable? I mean, there's down, is there insurance? Who, um, who would be really responsible for that, should something happen?
Uh,
and, and how do we ensure that the de-watering happens regularly as needed?
Well, that, that would be um, well, I know how it works on capital improvement. Let's say if you were doing, um, a library or something like that. And, and, uh, the perf, there, there were professionals involved. Say, we would see, and we, we would, we would write a, a specification and enforce the specification to do that. I don't know how that works when there's an agreement between development- between developer and contractor. When the, the developer is going to be as stringent as, let's say, the professional working on.
That's my concern, obviously.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not quite sure unless the, I don't know whether the township engineer would, would be. I guess usually it's the building department that, that follows those things in, in our experience. But they don't necessarily get involved in that.
Right. So what mechanism could we use to ensure that that de-watering happens?
Well, I, I think we had recommended that, that they submitted an excavation work plan that would, and excavation and de-watering work plan. Prepared by a registered professional engineer who would be responsible to, I can't use the word ensure, but, but responsible to check that the contractor is actually following the plan. And, and report that to the building department or the town engineer. I don't know how the, the municipality would set that up.
Okay. It's just an area of concern.
No, I understand.
Thank you, Counselperson. Mr. Wilks.
Yes. You mentioned the wells. Did you need the read of the wells to give you a better evaluation?
Well, if, if they did install wells in order to determine groundwater levels, you would have a lot more information than is currently available. But right now, there's, there's, there's really, there, there isn't anything that positively pinpoints whether there's groundwater or there's no groundwater in the, in the records. And that is, is kind of typical areas that are underlined by rock because things vary because of the droning of the rock.
Is anything that we could put in as, as conditions to get those readings? Is it smart stipulations for the Nicky's department?
It, 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 it wouldn't, in our opinion, be, it, it would be a good idea to do that in order, in order to address the, the issues that were raised for groundwater and groundwater infiltration.
Okay. Now, you mentioned blasting. Was the blasting a recommendation?
No, no, it's not a recommend, it's not a recommendation. It's an economic decision. And again, that's, it's, it's, it's kind of a time factor that, and if you, if you don't blast, it's going to take a lot longer and, and longer to excavate. So the blasting is usually used to, to, to increase the ease of excavation. This rock is particularly, it, for some reason, the strength of the samples that were actually cordoned were particularly weak for this type of rock. But this type of rock is usually extremely high strength. It's like 25,000 to 30,000 PSI. That's almost got the same compressive strength as steel. And so it's very rough on the equipment to excavate. And, and, and so blasting is usually used to, 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 to make it more economical to complete the excavation.
Do you think the blasting would be so significant it could affect some of the other slopes in the area?
Well, I, well, well, the, I think what we're recommending is that they apply a very, a very conservative criteria to determine the amount of explosive that you would put in, into the blasting hole, into the hole. That's, so this, we, we're recommending that the blasting, if, if it is performed, that, that they, they look at distances to the area to be protected, which is the top of the slope is only 40 to 100 feet away. So that would result in a much more, smaller than, than would otherwise be. If you were just worried about a house that was 500 feet away, it, it probably would have no influence at all on the size of the charge. That was.
Thank you. Counselperson Harper.
I'm sorry. One thing, I think the condition that you suggested, and I need something that basins, Mr. Wilks.
The wells, yes. I wanted to make sure we had a condition there. So I wanted to see if you needed more information to make a better, better evaluation.
Is that already included in your list of conditions or is that an additional one?
Well, we, we recommended monitoring.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that I missed.
I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
Counselperson Harper.
Yeah. Couldn't this project be done without blasting?
I believe it could.
Could that be a condition that, that would not happen? Because that's a real concern of the, of the residents.
I'm going to leave that up to the experts. That's beyond what I understand because.
This was in your backyard?
I think we've had testimony before that each methodology has its own risks.
Yeah, I, I think that's correct. There are other effects. It's like, we, I, I mean, I happen to live near the salt slope and it was brutal, the amount, the amount of ramming by great, the equipment that had to be used to get the, get the rock out with outlets. It, it is doable.
Yeah, from an environmental point, standpoint, which will be better for the residents of that neighborhood.
I mean, it's always concerning when you properly control the, the blasting might be effective in reducing the amount of disturbance if it's properly controlled.
To get pollution and, you know, all those toxins in the air and stuff.
I'm not sure that, I, I don't know. I can't speak. I, I'm not an expert in this. I'm not sure that it does give off emissions. I, I would suspect it doesn't, but I mean, it would be that, there would be max placed on top. You wouldn't see a big, you know, like, like, like somebody set up a bomb or something like that, it would be like that. There would be max placed on this. There would be standard procedures. It is a safety precaution because the.
It's going to seep into the air.
Well, rocks get thrown into the air and it makes you cause injury, but, but not 400 feet away.
Just for a point of clarification, I know what the answer is, but I'd like you to say it. We've been using the word, the experts have been using the word basalt. Can you define the word basalt for the public and some of the members of the board?
Okay, basalt is just a, 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 a name given, given to a, an intrusive igneous rock, which is volcanic, which is, which is due. It's, it's the molten, molten material from the center of the earth. The earth kind of tears apart due to tectonic.
So it's volcanic igneous rock.
Beasting comes up. And basalt is one type. If you go further east to the Palisades, it's not basalt, it's diabase. And it has to do with the grain size in, in the rock. The, the diabase on the Palisades is, is actually much stronger and must let, much less fractured.
Second question, the, the first part of this project was West Essex Highlands 1. So would you imagine as an expert that the, the rock base is similar in the first part as to the second part?
Okay, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not really familiar.
Don't answer them. That's okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Sorry?
It was a good question.
Every once in a while I have them.
Put it down.
Thank you. Okay.
9:45.
Okay, good. Cool. We have recorded. Thank you. Okay. Mayor McCartney.
Sir, on one of the recommendations you mentioned, no discharge over the slope.
Correct.
Right. So it's my understanding that all of the basins are, are to the west of that, of the.
There are two basins immediately adjacent to the west side of building D. And they're designed to infiltrate a certain amount of water into the ground. And the rest would, would go out in accordance with the provisions that the DEP prescribed.
So then really nothing would be going, going over the slope?
Right. But it shouldn't be. It, it, it would be, you know, if there was no monitoring of the excavation would be convenient. But he's looking to throw a hose over the slope. Yeah, mostly I'm talking about construction. But, but the grading, at least as it's shown on the plan, it keeps water from flowing, flowing over the top of the slope.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Melvi, could you have any questions from Mr. Kleinberg? Thank you. Mr. Ephron, would you? I'll take that as a yes?
Kleinberg, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll just talk about one of the last points you've raised since it's fresh in my mind. You mentioned earlier recently about the joints and the entry point of infiltration. And basically you suggested as that process continues, it sort of cascades internally and can cause slope failure.
It could, it could lead to higher pressures downhill, yes.
Higher hydrostatic pressures. And what will the higher hydrostatic pressures lead to in themselves?
Sorry.
Sorry. What will the higher hydrostatic pressures lead to?
It, it would act like a hydraulic jack. There was, let's say you have rock pushed together and then all of a sudden it feels like let's say you had 50 feet of height to where the water is entering the rock. You'd have like a 3,000 pound per square foot jack pushing the rock apart.
And that's what would destabilize this?
And then if that rock joint daylighted, or it wouldn't daylight, but if it, if it came to the surface of the rock and, and was injected into the soil, it, it could start to act as a jet and, and, and then break down the soil immediately where the, where the joint intersects, intercepts the soil overburden.
And is that what's called liquefaction?
That could lead to liquefaction when you have, when, when you reduce the effect of stress in the, in, in the soil. It could, in other, in other words, the sand, the, the sand grains are put together. There's enough pressure in there. You, you subtract the actual pressure. You subtract the hydrostatic pressure from that. And if the hydrostatic pressure exceeds the, the, the pressure confining the soil, then it liquefies. It becomes quicksand.
And this would be on the slope immediately below building D?
That's a condition that could occur. I, I, I can't guarantee that it would occur.
Well, you said.
Something that you would be. You, you'd be questioned to protect against in the construction.
Now, this process is a permanent process depending on the existing and existence of joints. Is that correct?
If permanent to the extent that the joints don't get clogged with something over time, then that could occur.
Right. In other words, this is not just a factor of the construction process. It's a factor of the natural status of the slope and the rock.
There, there are, there are existing joint patterns. And then the concerns in construction is that the construction disturbance would create additional cracks or enlarge the cracks that already exists.
Now, this process, I think is, I think it was Mr., forget, one of the board members did ask, is there any natural existing condition already that could cause soil impacts? This condition exists already, correct?
I'm sorry, whether there are joints that would transport water, we don't know. It's not indicated. There's only, the only rock you can see is what's the limited amount of outcrops that are on the, on the slope. It's, it's something to be guarded against. It's a, it's a condition that could exist and you would want to guard against it in your planning for construction.
How do you guard against it if the condition naturally exists already?
Well, you would want to, you wouldn't want to introduce water into that location. And we would, you would ground it with, if you, if you could identify it and see it, say in the excavation, you come across a joint that's wide, then you would, then you would try to fill it with ground, plug it up.
This is an 800-foot-long building, is that correct?
That's correct.
So in other words, this potential exists along the entire 800-foot length of building on that ridge. Is that right?
Yes. I mean, there are joints underneath, in the rock underneath the 800-foot length of building and, and beyond that inside.
So how does one actually protect against this enormous length to know that these fractures are not either there now or opening up? I mean, it seems to be an enormous area to protect against. How do you practically do this?
Well, the, the, we don't, we don't know that it does exist. And you would, and if, if, if you, if you don't know and you, then, then you, you, the, the answer is that you, well, you, this, this is a condition that may exist, but we're not sure that it doesn't. Cause I, I think that's the best answer I can give.
Well, you devoted almost the full page to discussing it at page 15 to 16. So you were concerned about it to the fact, to the point where you actually gave a professional analysis. So why were you this concerned about it if it's something that may not exist?
Because it's a potential that, that it might exist.
Is it wise to build on a ridge or next to the top of the ridge where this condition may exist that could cause the slope to collapse?
Well, if you don't introduce groundwater into it, 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 it may not be a problem at all.
Have you looked at the engineering plans of this building?
I, I looked, the, the structural drawings are not available, but I did look at the architect's plans for the building.
Well, the architect's plans don't deal with the issue of the slope and the avoidance of groundwater infiltration, do they?
Sorry?
Do the architect's plans deal with this issue of?
No, they don't.
So we don't know that there's anything in these plans, as far as you know, that's already in the plan to protect against this groundwater infiltration?
I, I would expect it, it, it been involved in similar projects that, that they wouldn't advance those plans until they got approval.
Well, didn't you often say in here that these plans are only preliminary? These building plans?
Correct.
So we don't know if they actually built into the plans at this point the protection to avoid the problem you've referred to, do we?
No, we don't.
Thank you. What is it that Langen has or says they have that they haven't given you, but that they say they're going to give you?
They, they, they assume the condition, the, a more conservative condition of groundwater levels on the slope where they, where they, they, they assume a groundwater level that's below the base of the topsoil layer, almost to the surface of ground.
Did they tell you what made them do this new remodeling, M-O-D-E-L-I-N-G?
I'm going to object. I don't believe anyone indicated that anything new was done.
Well, it wasn't given to you before, was it?
They, they did not give us the results. They, and I don't, I, I.
Did they say when they didn't?
No, they didn't. The conversation I had with them.
As a professional engineer, does it strike you as a little strange that they would have a more conservative model to address the very problem that was so obvious to you but never provided them?
Well, they, they, they formed an opinion that, that groundwater, that there was no groundwater condition on the slope.
And now they have another opinion that assumes it's groundwater and that's why you call that a more conservative opinion, correct?
Correct. It, 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 it was just a test. And, and if I was doing an analysis, it would be a test. What if the groundwater? We don't know that it would, but it's a what if.
So you would have done the more conservative analysis initially and submitted that as part of your presentation?
I, 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 I don't know that. I'm not 100% sure that I would.
Are you aware of any reason why they would have done this more conservative analysis? Held it back, not giving it to anyone?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry if I implied that. I'm not sure that they did that.
Well, either they have it now and they had it all along or in contrast, what Mr. Plucker said, it's a new analysis.
Yeah, I'm not sure. They would have to explain to the board when, when it was done. And they, they would have to, they would have to, I, I, I'm not, I, I don't know enough about. All I know is they said, we did evaluate, we, we didn't even leave that in the, that's all I know.
And just to be clear, they didn't tell you when they did that? And just to be clear, they didn't tell you when they did that analysis?
No.
Let's talk about the US Geological Survey map. The Hazes map, is that how you refer to it? H A Z U S, right. Now, what does that map tell us? What does it tell you?
It identifies a Class B, which is a lower class of risk, in accordance with the Hazes standards, be a Class B three, which is a weakly cemented sand or rock, weakly cemented soil or rock with slopes of less than fifteen degrees.
Okay, so this particular slope, is it more or less than fifteen degrees?
The slope, when you get to about middle of the slope roughly, where the township's surface reduces to less than fifteen degrees.
And at what point is it greater than fifteen degrees?
From that point up to the ridge.
Okay, and what is that angle?
Those angles are between twenty and twenty-nine degrees, something like that.
So it's a fairly steep change?
Yeah, you can see it on the contour.
Now, what does the Hazes map that you have tell us?
It's just saying that we, as I said, we could not find the basis for the Hazes classification. It was not indicated on the map. We checked with the New Jersey Geological Society in our files, and we could not find a report that explained the basis of the classification. And we went to the USGS, and that's involved with the shutdown at this point.
What is it you would need from the USGS once they reopen, assuming they reopen someday?
Something.
We just needed what their description of the actual landslide hazard was. In other words, is that a rising of the groundwater level to the surface of ground?
And based on the Hazes map that you have, are you able to make that assessment at this point?
No, we said that.
I wanted to just clarify. So you can't really give an opinion, excuse me, an opinion at this stage as to that hazard until you've at least consulted the geological service? Service, excuse me.
Well, I don't know, I'm not that, you would need to check for the the background for the Hazes map.
But you're thinking they may have?
They may, but we did search for it, and we couldn't find it.
But just to clarify, you were not able to search for it at the survey because they're closed temporarily?
No, we did consult with the New Jersey Geological Society for, I think the USGS did it for the New Jersey Geological Survey. And the New Jersey office didn't have the report that the mapping is based on.
Based on the map you have, is it indicating anything as to a hazard?
It just said it's a Class B three, weakly cemented soil or rock with a slope of fifteen degrees, that's what it said.
And who wrote that map? Who created that map?
The, I think it was done by the US Geological Society in Forney, New Jersey, and that society started surveying for the New Jersey, but I really, I haven't been able to find the background of that.
Do you have any reason, let me go further then. What would a Class B hazard mean or amount to? Assuming that's correct, since you have the document at least in front of you, what would that mean, a Class B hazard?
That's what I'm trying to find out.
You mean, as an engineer, does the word Class B hazard have meaning to you?
Not to me, it's the first time I've seen it in my prime.
What does it mean, excuse me, what does it mean that the sand is weakly cemented? Could you explain that?
Well, it means that it's, there's two components of strength, there's cohesion, and there's friction, and it has a little cohesion, and that could dissipate in the presence of groundwater, that cohesion could dissipate.
So that begins at liquefaction, and then the-
Well, I don't know about liquefaction for sure, but if it were just the bond between the particles.
So the weekly bond, water can infiltrate and further separate the ones?
Further weaken.
Thank you. Have you, strike that. In your report at page nine, this may mean something different from the way it sounds, so I just want to find out what it means. You refer to a fault that is approximately two thousand feet from the site, and it's in the first full paragraph. Can you explain what that refers to?
Okay, that's in the Langen report.
Okay.
It's on the map in the Langen report, and it refers to a geologic fault that in which there was a significant amount of movement, but that would have likely occurred eons ago, you know, actually at the time the earth separated, and resulted with the injection of this volcanic rock, and there was a shift, a movement. You can see it on the map that Langen has there.
Why, does it have any significance in your report, or is it only noted as a fact of the site?
It was noted in the Langen report, and they described it as being, in other words, it's not like the San Antonio, that it's still active. It's not categorized as being an aquifer.
Thank you, I just want to clarify. Now, you mentioned that your firm was not retained to do an independent analysis of the stability of the slope in the area of the study. Who gave you your instructions?
The instruction came from our engineer, and our engineering representative at the planning board, the way it was explained. We have two opposing reports, can you explain what the difference is between the two reports?
So you've essentially compared the two discussions from the two consultants, and you've addressed them in some way?
Well, we looked to, had they touched the standards of care, were they using methods of analysis of the slope that are in accordance with the current standards of practice? And you have about, you have one engineer who's trying to come up with stability results that indicate instability, and the results, at least as presented in the report, don't in our opinion indicate instability.
And you based that on Langen's engineer who wants to show stability, is that correct?
Sorry, no, I based it on the safety factors that were produced by the methods and in accordance with the standards of practice for for evaluation of a slope, just a slope that that one point five is the standard criteria. And we thought that the criteria proposed by Princeton Hydro was not reasonable for this application.
And your view was that the section of the Army Code, Army Corps Code dealt with?
It's not a code, it's an engineering manual.
Well, it's the engineering manual, the Army Corps manual. Your feeling was that the two point oh factor, let me just get to that section, give me a moment. Your feeling was that section EM one one oh dash two nineteen oh two, strike that, EM one one oh dash two two nine oh eight, requiring a minimum safety factor of two point oh oh would not be applicable to this type of project, you said?
Correct.
Right, because that-
That's our thing.
Right. But then you said that if this project was built on the slope, it could even, might be why in that case you use the Hazes map?
That would be, that would be the way I would approach.
Now, the building's only, I think, about seven feet from the actual ridge line, is that correct?
No, it's forty, yeah, well, the actual ridge line is, I think it's more than seven feet.
Well, this has been an issue going through this case to define where the building is in relationship to the actual high point. Are you able to say how close the building is to the actual high point?
Mr. Efron, one second, Mr. Plucker wants to say something.
Well-
Oh, what, Mr. Kleinberg, one second.
No, I'm just saying, I don't know if that was part of his assignment or something he studied. Obviously, the line that we're talking about, that we need to stay west of pursuant to the ordinance, is in the concept plan that was attached to the settlement agreement, and there's also reference in the ordinance which describes it. So I don't know, was he tasked with that? I just want to make a clear record. If it's not something he reviewed or was tasked with, then he probably shouldn't answer the question.
No, he's an engineer evaluating.
Let's ask Mr. Kleinberg, he's the expert. Mr. Kleinberg, go right ahead, sir.
Sorry?
Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think you're referring to the actual knob where the crest of the ridge, and the building is, I don't think it's as close to seven, or maybe, but it's that, we were talking about the influence to the area where the slope begins to drop.
Right.
And that's forty to a hundred feet away.
That because further north, there's no building, and the area may drop.
Well, I'm talking about in the, what they did, their analysis sections, A and and B, I think it is. They, those are, those are, address the building, the actual building and the slope that runs further down to the rods down near the lane road.
Right, that's on the northern part of the map, where there are some private homes below the slope where it drops.
Right, and then those homes are relatively close.
All right, well, my question is this, you said that if it was built on the slope, it would be reasonable to use the higher Army Corps standard? Now, my question, I guess, is how close to the high point of the slope is too close to use the lower standard? When would you want to use the more conservative standard?
Well, what Langen did was they did a slope stability, they did slope stability analyses, assuming the building where it's shown on the plan, and it had no effect on the computer factors of safety, so.
And you based that, I thought you said, because they were above the one point five level?
Yes.
So my question is, if it would be prudent to use the two point oh, the more conservative safety, if you're building on a slope, at what point would you want to start applying a more conservative approach as you get closer to the ridge?
Oh, if I was a hundred feet down the slope, something like that.
We're not a hundred feet down a slope, we're actually very close to the ridge line.
Right, it's more stable there, in my opinion.
Okay, so you're saying if there was two slopes, the further from the ridge line, the more concerning?
Right.
But as you're at the higher point, you're less concerned?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to understand for a second. Are you familiar with the term rockfall?
Yes.
Like a rockfall zone, or catchment zone?
Yeah.
What do those terms mean?
That means when you have a highway slope, and the slopes of the rock comes off, falls down to the bottom of the slope, sometimes it could actually hit vehicles on a highway, and that sort of thing.
The bottom point is often called the toe of the slope, is that correct?
Correct.
Sort of your toe angles, that's the bottom point. Now, the rockfall zone would normally be off the slope somewhere after the toe, is that correct?
Well, there would be a certain area that would be protected, and they frequently put up a value.
Now, in this particular instance, if there's a danger of rockfall or landslide or anything like that, what type of rockfall zone would normally be used to protect the?
I don't think there's a condition on this, on the outcrops, they're not going to do any construction on the slope. The outcrops are maximum ten feet high, something like that, I don't think there is a rockfall hazard associated with this project.
Now, if the slope destabilized through the liquefaction and the infiltration liquefaction process, what would that mean in terms of the physical stability of the slope?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure, if there was water infiltration, and then you went to the expansion of the joints and liquefaction and destabilization of the slope, what would that look like in terms of the physical condition of the slope? What would happen to the slope?
Well, I think if we were making a lake instead of a building, that could occur, but we're not doing that.
Well, you said that if there is joints that open, water could infiltrate, and we have to protect against that in some way. That didn't require a lake, that was just normal groundwater.
Well, no, it would require a substantial supply of water.
In terms of a very heavy rainfall, as you say in the report?
Right, but if there are mitigating procedures-
No, I understand. Are you aware of any mitigating procedures in the present plan?
I don't think the plans have been advanced that far.
The answer is no.
I'm not aware, the answer is no.
Now, if if you had the infiltration and liquefaction, et cetera, what would that physically do to the slope?
I don't know that this liquefaction-
All right, Mr. Kleinberg, I'm asking you a very simple question. You said that could happen, you don't know the conditions-
Mr. Efron? Mr. Efron?
I'm only asking one question, yes.
You're asking a hypothetical on top of a hypothetical, in the last meeting, you argued against talking about hypotheticals.
No, I said in the last meeting, you can't say to a witness, if an opposing party satisfies your conditions, would you withdraw your objections? That is not the kind of hypothetical you give to an expert witness. This is. The witness said there is a danger of opening the joints, liquefaction, collapse of the slope. He said he doesn't know yet, because he doesn't know where the joints are.
You presented that the hypothetical exists. Did Mr. Kleinberg say that these open joints exist in his evaluation?
He doesn't know them.
Okay.
So I'm simply saying, and he said we should put protection in to make sure in case they're there. So my question is very simply, if this liquefaction process occurs and the slope destabilizes, what would happen to the slope? You've got houses underneath, what would happen to the slope versus the houses?
Well, the houses aren't underneath.
Well, they're below the slope, is my point. So if the slope destabilizes, what happens physically?
That's, there would have to be some sort of, you'd have to project a failure surface to the toe of the slope, and that hasn't been done in the analysis, but-
I'm not asking you that. You said there is a concern you have, that if we don't know where the joints are, and we don't know their condition, that infiltration of water can cause this process and destabilize the slope. You said that's a concern.
I should have said reduce the stability of the slope.
Well, you said destabilize it.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that would happen, so I should have said reduce the stability.
And when you reduce the stability of the slope, what happens physically to the slope?
It may, there may be a slide.
Okay.
But then, but nothing to date has been identified that that would actually occur.
You know one way or the other whether this condition exists inside that slope right now?
No, I don't.
And you posited as a professional engineer that it's something we need to consider, isn't that correct?
I did.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, while you're, so you were talking about when they excavate for the garage, right, to go down for that building, and they have to make sure they dewater that excavation area, and when they see a fissure or a crack in the, in the, I guess it's the basalt section, whatever it is, they're going to grout it to keep any water from getting into that, and by dewatering it and grounding it, no water will go down in and create this fifty-foot head and start giving way to the slope, is that correct?
What we're recommending is a prudent approach
Right.
to conditions that could, but we don't know actually exist.
Right, right. So assuming they exist, there's ways of keeping it from failing? Grouting, dewatering, correct?
Right.
All right.
And at present, are there any mitigation measures by way of redirecting that stormwater away from the slope area behind building D, to your knowledge in the-
Well, we're recommending that the applicant's engineer take a look at it. Well, we're recommending that that the applicant's engineer take a look at it and come up with a new change.
Okay, I I wanted to talk, I think we're making two different things.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. Kleinberg, are are we mixing up two different things? Is after the building is built, there's gonna be drainage and there's gonna be collection of stormwater. While the building is under construction, there's gonna be de-watering and grouting and whatever they need to keep that excavation from gathering water and letting that water get into these cracks into the, is it, we're talking about two different things?
That, that, that's, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Ephraim. What do you mean by two different things? Let's clarify.
We're in construction and then construction.
No.
What you, what are you asking him about?
That's what I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to find out where the concern of the engineer lies. That's the point of my question.
Okay.
So, the question is, are the mitigation measures that you think the applicant's engineer should look at necessary for the permanency of the project or just during construction, or both?
Well, for groundwater infiltration is for the permanent.
Thank you. That was my point. Talking about modeling, you said there was a difference of approach or of analysis between High Prince and Hydro and Langen. And I think you mentioned that Langen used a less rigorous engineering approach to the question of the color.
They they did not use the monso. And and uh you know, I I I'm not a hundred percent sure it would have been necessary to use it either, but they they said they did not see mine.
Well, you said that they did a different type of color analysis.
Well, no, they they did uh, this is brown sand, red sand, blue sand, or there's, the 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 monso system gets much more involved.
DEP is a standard of care in this field in New Jersey.
Uh, for for the, the, for determining the seasonal high water table for the purpose of mitigation of the the in- the infiltration.
And and in evaluating modeling, DEP's monso chart is the appropriate standard, is that correct?
Right, for the purpose of the stormwater management, it's not necessarily done for for routine engineering work.
But in terms of seeing that the infiltration basins are correctly instructed and designed, the monso standard is the one DEP wants to seek.
Because the the, I I think, I'm not an expert, and it's, I I think it's just they have to determine the spacing between the bottom of the of of the infiltration basin and the seashore.
Right, of course.
And that's an entirely different purpose.
Right, but I'm just asking, you raised the issue of the monso chart in your initial presentation, so I'm just trying to clarify. DEP says use the monso chart to evaluate whether modeling exists, isn't that correct?
But yeah, for the purpose of determining how high the infiltration basin is, they're not talking about slopes.
Right, that's the only reason we're talking about it, because of the infiltration basin, the seasonal high water tape.
But they, it has to be a certain distance above the high water.
That's why we're talking about modeling and that's why Langen and that's why Princeton Hydro talked about.
Yeah, but that, but on the slope, that it it it's not always a concern.
Mr. Kleinberg, I'm not talking about the slope. You raised the issue of the monso chart with respect to the infiltration basins, that's what I'm talking.
I was, I was trying to compare the difference in approach between Princeton Hydro and Langen. Princeton Hydro went to uh, who sent up of of talking about the modeling and 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 so I just addressed it, what's the difference between the two engineers' approaches?
Princeton Hydro followed the DEP monso chart, Langen used a different approach, correct?
Right.
Thank you. What does it mean when you say at page eighteen, Langen has questioned the assumed stratification stating, on that section, stating that it does not consider dense sands on that section which were indicated by the boards, could you explain what it means?
Uh, I mean, on the, on the analysis section CC, which is near, I think that's thirteen, it's it's above the the property, I think identified as in Howard Drive. Um, then then uh uh Princeton Hydro, uh assuming that there would be medium value sands down to the top of rock, but the boring set that that Langen did indicated that there were dense sands.
Oh, I see, so you're saying here that Langen questions what Hydra said because it saw what it saw, what what it saw was denser sand.
Right.
That's all that means.
Right, they different, and they they they, they said that what Princeton Hydro assumed didn't reflect what they encountered in their board.
Are you offering a conclusion on this issue or are you just reporting what the two sides say?
I'm just reporting what the two sides said.
You think the appropriate section of the Army Man, of the Army Corps manual is the section one 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 zero dash two nineteen oh two, which uses the one point five thing?
Right, that's slopes, that's their slope stability, man.
Right, and you're saying that for this type of project, where it's located, that would be the appropriate standard?
Yes.
Okay, now, it's true that section three dash four sub E of that section actually requires that, if I can just get to that. Well, it says E one. Just one, Mr. Chairman, if I can just have one moment, I'm sorry. Section E one states the following, instability of natural slopes is often related to high internal water pressures associated with wet weather periods. It is appropriate to analyze such conditions as long-term steady-state seepage conditions using drain strengths and the highest probable position of the piezometric surface within the slope. Now, that's in the section of the manual that you say is applicable here. Is that referring to the study that you recommended or asked for? In which you say at number six, the applicant's engineers should propose and perform a stability evaluation using a conservative piezometric surface that would reflect the response of groundwater to heavy storm-induced rainfall?
Yes.
Right, your recommendation is based on that section of the manual three point four E one?
I, I, it 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 stems from the same, the the state in the conventional approach.
Now, and that's what you say, Langen says it has, but hasn't given yet.
I don't know exactly where it has, I haven't seen.
Okay, let me ask you this, if it's in the manual, in the section of the manual that applies to a project of this nature, wouldn't that be the standard of care that Langen should have followed to begin with?
I am not necessarily sure of that.
But you recommend following it with respect to this study?
If if I was doing the analysis, I would do it, and that's why we mentioned.
Well, you didn't mention it, you said this is one of the things you want them to do, isn't that correct? This is one of the things you want them to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it is said that it should be, the Army Corps manual actually says it should be done, right?
It recommends it, yes.
And they didn't actually do it or didn't present it, one way or the other, right?
I I I'm not a hundred percent sure when they did it, they.
Or if they did.
They said they did.
Okay. But if it's, thank you. You mentioned something here about stockpiling or the presence of heavy machinery would reduce the stability of the slope, is that correct?
Good.
Good. So you say surcharges resulting from the stockpiling of materials and heavy equipment should not be permitted on the ridge immediately above the slope to avoid a reduction of the stability of the slope, that's what you say at number four?
Yes.
And you think that's a prudent, proper engineering position?
Yes.
Now, you also say equipment shouldn't be, heavy equipment shouldn't be placed in that same position to avoid reducing the stability of the slope?
Yes, I did.
Well, how on earth do you build this eight hundred foot long building, maybe seven, eight, ten feet from the height line of the ridge without putting this heavy equipment in the very place where you say it shouldn't be?
But um, what I'm trying, I'm trying to, they, you don't have to necessarily operate the equipment on the east side of the building. It can be done.
It can be done.
And and you should just avoid running the equipment on the slope uh as a, as a matter of prudent practice, and we're recommending that that be included in the excavation work plan.
So as a condition of approval, you're saying that in construction, no heavy equipment should be on the east side of where the building will go?
Well, uh that's, that's too general.
You said it in your testimony.
Well, I I mean, they, I think, I think it's, that's a more uh, I was talking about excavation equipment when I, when I made the new recommendation, not erection equipment for the building.
Okay, so you're saying that heavy excavation equipment should not be on the slope on the east part of where the building will go?
Right, in other words, op- operating on the east side of the building, uh be on the area of disturbance showing on the plate.
Wait, 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 the area of disturbance, you're, you're saying that, let's clarify this, we have the Bill Building D, it's this long structure the right side on the drawing, the things, the east side of the building, runs along the ridge line, correct?
Correct, and they, they show a limit, a limit of excavation.
Right, now you're saying that in the point from the limited excavation on the eastern side of the excavation pit, that eight hundred foot strip, there should be no excavating equipment from that point to the top of the ridge. Is that what you're saying?
That's, 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 I would recommend that.
Right, and you would recommend that as a condition of approval built into this plan?
Uh, I, if that's, uh, I said that, and I think it should be, uh, I put
You were pretty sure of it when you testified, why?
Well, let him, let him.
That's a condition of approval, absolutely.
Let him answer the question, please.
Okay, I, um okay, I I guess, I guess, may- maybe it should be included in the work plan as a requirement.
What about if fire vehicles have to go on the eastern side?
Because of the proper objection.
Oh, I, I, Mr. Ephraim, I don't know that, are you qualified to answer about?
Yeah.
Uh, I wanna find out if he's qualified to talk about a fire vehicle and its weight, that's all. Are you qualified to talk about a fire, fire engine and its weight and different sized fire engines?
Ye- yes, I am.
Okay, go right ahead.
Are there any, I heard someone say that it'd be too close because you can't get that close because of the drop zone, so you wouldn't normally have a vehicle there anymore. That may be resolved, I think we talked about it with the architect, Mr. Alfred originally. So there wouldn't normally be fire vehicles on the eastern side. So you're saying that to construct this safely, aside from other issues, there must be no excavating equipment on that eastern part of the ridge, right?
So when you're talking excavating, you're talking about big front-end loaders and also they exceed the loads of a fire.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm not talking about fire anymore, I think Mr. Klein's correct, we talked about that early on, you wouldn't have because of the drop zone. So I I withdraw that question. I just want to be clear, so there should be no bulldozers, no excavating equipment, no.
No, heavy.
No, heavy, correct, well, how do you define heavy?
Well, there are, there are bulldozers of certain sizes that are not heavy. And they, and their bulldozers are designed to reduce the, the uh the bearing, the the pressures on the ground that they operate on.
So all of this should be conditions of approval, that these types of vehicles should not be on that side of the structures or the excavation pit?
Uh, that's, that's what we, what we said.
Yes, thank you. I have a few more questions, Mr. Chairman, sorry to go so long. What about the weight of the structure itself? So close to the ridge line, I mean, if you can't have heavy earth moving equipment right there, what impact does the weight of the structure itself potentially have? I I'm, because I'm very puzzled, because on the one hand you say Langen says there's no danger to the stability of the slope over there from buildings and all this blasting blowing. Yet then you say merely putting some heavy equipment on that side is a danger. So it's very puzzling to me how you can accept Langen's statement that there's no danger to the stability of the slope by putting this massive building there, but somehow there is danger to the stability of the slope by putting a bulldozer? It explains that.
Yeah, the the building presses are are reduced to to a bearing pressure that's less than the weight of the heavy equipment.
You mean at any given point?
In any given.
They were displacing them.
They they use footings to distribute the load and if they and and if they extend the footings to rock, uh then then the bearing capacity is there.
Have you seen an engineering plan showing the displacement of weight?
No, I have not.
So you have no idea whether they're gonna build it correctly?
I, I assume they're gonna follow the code.
We assume that the Titanic's water tight section.
Okay, well, we're not, whoa, 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 whoa.
You got a problem?
Mr. Ephraim, yeah, well, that's a fish story in itself, but uh.
Well, it's a valid point, though, engineering crises happen because we make assumptions.
Okay, so we're going to assume that all the correct procedures will be followed.
Without an engineering plan before the board, so the board can see that?
We're, we're going to assume that the the building department will have the correct engineering plan and all things will be done according to the ordinance and the law.
With respect, that is not how the process can work legally. This board has to satisfy itself.
Yes.
And it's a building department issue.
We will see everything, I'm sure, before we get done.
I certainly hope so, because right now the expert who says these possible crises can happen says he doesn't know if it can be protected against.
Okay, well, we're gonna find out.
I would hope so, and it can't be sent to the building department after this is approved. This board has to satisfy itself.
We will.
These issues are addressed in the plan, we don't have a complete plan.
And we will.
Well, when are we getting that complete plan?
Okay, keep going, we'll uh find out. It it's a story, it's a story yet unraveling.
It's a story.
Yeah, quick question, so you're saying we should be looking at footing designs and foundation designs at the planning board level?
When you're building on a ridge line that an expert says can collapse if the weight is not properly displaced.
Objection, that's not what he said.
Isn't that?
Now you're self-serving, Mr. Ephraim, and you know what, we've been very patient.
We.
You are coming to an end. Yes, we are.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Mr. Kleinberg.
Jeth.
If there's not adequate displacement, is there a danger of destabilization of the slope?
I'm sorry, the what's?
If there is not adequate displacement built into the structure, isn't it correct that there is a danger of destabilization of the slope?
Uh, I I, it it, I I don't, I don't think so, I think the location of the building is 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 probably far enough back.
Well, you just said that putting the bulldozer there destabilized, creates a risk of destabilization. And when I asked you why the weight of the building does, hang on, hang on. When I asked you why the weight of the building doesn't do that, you told me, well, it's going to be displaced by the different foundational elements. Now I'm asking you, if it's not adequately displaced in the engineering plans, is there a risk of destabilization of the slope?
It's lost. I I I I could, it it could easily be designed so it doesn't.
And do you see the design yet to show that it will not?
I I have not seen the design.
Is that something that gets typically submitted to the planning board?
I don't think so.
And in your view, can you say as an engineer, having looked at this problem, that this building will not create a risk of destabilization when you haven't yet seen the displacement design of the plan?
You can, because it was modeled in the analysis as a, as as an average area building load of a thousand pounds a square foot and which is, which is reasonable. And they they did analyses with the building in place and without the building in place and they knew the same safety factor.
Have you seen a plan that shows that's the actual displacement that will be incorporated into the building plan?
It's, it is in, it it. It's, it is in, it, it, at this stage of design, it, it, it's common to use an average area building loads, which is what they do.
Have you seen any plan that shows that that level of building load will be built into the plan?
Um, I think we addressed in the report that, that the, the load is not extremely conservative, but that it, it's within the realm of reality.
Have you seen a plan that shows that that level of displacement will actually be incorporated into the building plan?
No, I have not seen a plan.
Thank you very much.
But it's conventional at this stage of design to use an average area building.
I understand that, but you don't see a plan to show that's how it will actually be done?
No, but I.
The Kleinberg, is it normal in the process for the engineers to review the final plan before they get a permit to build?
Review?
Is, is it normal in the course of events for the applicant to provide an engineering plan with all the safeguards in place to be evaluated by the engineer before they get a permit to build?
Foundations.
Foundation.
Uh, frequently, it's, you can get a geotechnical report with recommendations on what the foundations desire. And I believe there was one done by SOAR Engineering.
Right, but before they would get a permit to build, it is a normal process that it would occur by an engineer to re, to evaluate the plan and make recommendations to the applicant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we read that question back, please? Could I? No, no, the reporter, please.
It's normal in the course of events for the applicant to provide an engineering plan with all the safeguards in place to be evaluated by the engineer before they get a permit to build foundations.
Yeah, I would object to your question, Mr. Chairman, because it was premised on the fact all the safeguards in place. I was asking about a specific problem as to whether this engineer sitting here today, Mr. Kleinberg, can say that there's adequate displacement built into the plan based on what he's seen, I wasn't talking about every possible safeguard. So I think your question is quite unjust to the issue I was raising.
I ask a different question.
I know. My question is. Seems to be designed to try to suggest that your board does not need to have this information.
No, we, I never suggested that, you just did, I, I asked a question, you asked a question, we both got answers to our question.
You asked about all safeguards, and I would submit that obviously not every single element of safeguard in every plan comes before a planning board. Would you agree, Mr. Kleinberg, that the question of whether a building can collapse or destabilize a slope if displacement is improper, is fundamental to the engineering?
It's fundamental to the engineering to have the bearing capacity that, that the ground can, can handle, including the effects of the slope. And it's possible to do that in my experience for the building where it's located.
In your experience with the building where this is located?
In this, in this type of condition.
This type of condition, okay.
Right.
Is it considered fundamental to the engineering of a building in circumstances like this to know whether or not adequate displacement is in the plan? Yes or no?
Can you repeat the question?
Would the reporter please repeat the question?
Is it considered fundamental to the engineering in circumstances like this, whether or not adequate displacement is in the plan, yes or no?
I, I believe that in this, at this stage of design, you can operate with a, an average area building load as Langen did.
My question was different, my question was, is it fundamental to the engineering of a building in these circumstances to know in advance whether or not adequate displacement is built into the plans to avoid the risk of destabilization of the slope? Is that a fundamental engineering element?
There is, there are building codes that, that, that the, that the, the designer eventually has to employ in order to get approval to build, to build the building.
Mr. Kleinberg, I'm asking a very direct question. In your opinion, as a professional engineer, is it a fundamental engineering question to know whether the plan will contain adequate displacement in circumstances where it is to be built on a near a slope that could cause destabilization? Is that a fundamental engineering element? That's my question.
At this stage of design, you don't need to know that.
I'm asking you a very simple question, the yes or no question. Is it a fundamental engineering element to know in advance that the displacement necessary to avoid destabilization of the slope is built into the plan? Yes or no, is that a fundamental engineering element of the plan? That's my question.
I'm not trying to avoid answering the question, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
I, I don't figure my question out, I'm asking you a question, I'm cross-examining, I have that right.
No, no, I, 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 I know that.
I know, I'm not fighting.
Trying to avoid answering.
Let me rephrase, let me just say it again directly, straightforward. Is it a fundamental engineering element of a plan to know there will be adequate displacement in circumstances where it is built on or near a slope that could destabilize?
At this stage of design, you don't need to know every detail of the building. You need, you, you need, I'm, I can tell you as, as an inexperienced engineer that it's doable in this case.
Let me just ask it slightly different. Is adequate displacement?
What's displacement?
You raised the issue, you told me, don't worry about it, it's not like the trucks, because when they build it, they can have all these foundations that will displace the weight, that's what you said.
I was talking about people driving front end, huge pieces of equipment back and forth uh, willy-nilly across the slope. Yeah, and we, and that, that should be avoided, I wasn't talking about the building.
Yeah, I was, and that's how we got into the subject, because you said, well, if you put this heavy earth moving machine, that can destabilize the slope, so I said to you, very logically, well, if that can destabilize a slope, can a very large structure of this nature, a very heavy structure, also cause that destabilization? That's what I asked, and you said to me, no, because you have displacement.
Not if it's properly designed, and it can be easily properly designed.
Right, we don't have that design in front of us yet, correct?
Because you would go through stages of.
Just answer yes and no, do we have that design in front of us, let me ask the question.
Oh, okay, if that's a simple question, the, the final design is not in front of us now.
And here's another simple question. Is it a fundamental engineering element of a plan to know that it will have adequate displacement to avoid destabilizing the slope? Yes or no? Is that a fundamental engineering element of a plan?
I'm not trying to avoid answering the question.
I don't know.
The question is kind of cockamamie, but I, you know.
It is, it is.
You know, I, so I, 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 I don't quite know how, how to answer that question.
Is it a fundamental engineering element to know that there is adequate displacement in the structure to avoid destabilizing the slope?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow up?
Mr. Klein.
When do you need to know the fundamental element of engineering to know the bearing capacity and the weight of the building for the final design of the footings?
For the final design is when it goes to final design.
Right, and, and if you had to, you may have to drive piles.
You may.
You may have to, right, I mean, you, you, you can always design a footing that will bear the weight of the building.
There are stages of design, and this is very preliminary, where, where you run on average area building loads as Langen had been done in this case. And it is, in my opinion, suitable to do that.
So a thousand pounds per square foot is a little bit conservatively high, or?
It's not conservatively high, but it's in the range.
Okay.
Do you have any idea what they plan on, other than that model that they spoke to?
What model?
Withdraw the question. Well, I'm not going to pursue that subject anymore, we've exhausted it, our view is it's a legal question, the question of what the board needs to have and when. And I don't know that the engineer himself is the one to decide that issue, we believe it's a legal question. That the board has a duty under the MLUL to ascertain for itself all material elements of safety and public interest in a plan. And in this particular instance, it's our position that because it is to be built on or near a slope that could destabilize based on the design or other issues, that that is a fundamental issue that must be known by the board, even though other issues may not be of such, um, material moment that the board needs to know all of them. Where the question arises that a building, if not properly displaced, could destabilize a slope, in our view legally, that is what the MLUL says, is information that must be heard by the board, so it's our position that that cannot be submitted legally later as a condition of approval or leave it for the construction office. This board must know that the public is protected by the nature of the design, that's why we're here. If we didn't need to do that, but just leave it to the construction official, virtually all the issues we talk about wouldn't be necessary, so it's our legal position, and we can discuss this later in the case, that that is not adequate to say, well, it can be supplied later after approval. Our position is the municipal land use law requires, as a matter of law, all information relating to the public safety to be known by the board if it's of a material nature. And certainly where a building could destabilize a slope, if it's not adequately displaced, that is not preliminary, that is your responsibility to know in advance, that is our legal position. That's why I've asked these questions, I understand the engineer has his view, legally, we say you must have this information. Um, we can discuss this when it's appropriate in the case, perhaps a closing arguments.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a few more brief.
As the hour grows late, Mr. Ephron.
We are.
The hour does grow late, I, I believe that.
Well, I could leave it for now, because obviously the public.
Public also has questions, so.
So we can do a few minutes beforehand.
Chairman Bagel.
Mr. Plucker.
Nine minutes left, I just have two or three questions, kind of while the iron is hot, would that be okay? Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plucker. Thank you, you're very magnanimous, Mr. Ephron, Mr. Plucker.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Kleinberg, I'll be very brief. I believe the additional, uh, model with a D, testing at, at this, at the surface that you represent Langen said they did, I do believe it's referenced in Langen's report from, uh, June eighteenth, which was a revision to their original report in January. I don't know if you have that report in front of you.
Did you say the page number?
I, 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 it was in the June eighteen.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, to confirm, and Mr. Kleinberg can certainly go back, or Mr. African can definitely check, I'm looking at page eight of thirteen of the memo entitled, and my contacts are going a little bonkers at this late hour, so you'll have to excuse me, I'm north of fifty. Uh, it's the memo, it, the ray line is global slope stability study for Building D, it was attached to, to that June Langen report. And on page eight of thirteen, under there's a groundwater section. Um, the last sentence is therefore our primary analysis excludes groundwater, and our secondary analysis assumes a high groundwater level to be at the top of the decomposed rock slash very dense granular soil layer, so tha- that is the additional, uh, model that you were referring to, you know?
It says at the top of the decomposed rock.
And the soil layer, it's, it's, it maybe it's not written very artfully, but it says the soil layer as well.
What they show is the top of the decomposed rock is about two feet over the rock surface, it's not at the ground.
Correct, but then it also does say, uh, and very dense granular soil layer.
Right, I, but I, okay, yes, that's.
Brian, are you saying that's the information still to be provided, but it was in that report?
Well, I, I'm just saying that, you know, you, you, Mr. Ephron, you were questioning whether this is something that was recently done or, or done back then, and I'm saying this report says it, it was modeled back.
That was my question, that's relating to what we were discussing earlier.
Yes, and I believe that the only thing that Mr. Kleinberg was asking for were the output files.
Right, so we'll check that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Plucker, I'd like Mr. Kleinberg to get everything that he needs to evaluate for the next meeting. You'll get that, we need you back at the next meeting, Mr. Kleinberg.
Uh, I was planning.
I'm leaving now.
Where are we all going?
Mister. Our attorney is going to give Mr. Plucker a list of things for you to review, and you'll come back to the next meeting, and you'll answer all the questions that have been open and.
I think that you already gave the list during your testimony, right, you familiar with, or I'll chat with you after the fact to make sure I have it correct. Are you really going away?
Uh, I was planning to.
So, um, do you want to move on? Next meeting? Or did you want to have the mayor of Essex Fells come?
Yeah, let's.
Should we know Mr. Kleinberg's vacation first?
When is his vacation?
Yeah.
Well, we're looking for December third. Are you available December third, sir?
Sorry?
Are you available December third, Wednesday? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
December third.
But there's a caveat. The, the board, uh, is thinking of a special meeting beginning at one P M on Wednesday, December third, ending at five, and then, um, resuming a meeting at six or six thirty, I don't know what the chairman wants to do for our regular meeting, so that would be at six o'clock. Because we do have an agenda item, uh, an application that was on at our last meeting that the notice wasn't right, and they wanted to be carried. And we do have to go into an executive session to discuss a litigated matter on a proposal. So, uh, it would be the afternoon of December third, um, about one o'clock. I know some board members can't make it for the afternoon session, but we do have a quorum when I sent out feelers. With the thought being, I think, I don't want to sneak out a turn, finish that testimony, and if that's the last witness, then we can begin public comment and continue public comment into the evening for the evening session when we finish our.
Well, how many hours are we supposed to work that day?
Well.
But where, the board is trying.
I'm going to say this, when I sent out, after discussing this with the chairman, and I sent out feelers to see what board members would be available, these wonderful board members who all have jobs, we have more than, I think we have six people here who, or six or seven, who are able and willing to give up their paying jobs in the day and, and volunteer their time, so yeah, that's a lot of hours, and I, I.
I only meant it in terms of all of our mutual effectiveness over that long period of.
Yeah, I know, but we'd be taking a break in between the two sessions, I understand that, and I hear you, and I'm like, we're all dying right now because we started at.
We might go eleven hours, basically.
It's.
Well, not because there'd be breaks.
No, because it would be a break, and we'd be not starting until one o'clock in the afternoon.
Right, we, we end at five, take a break, then start at six thirty, is that the idea?
We'll end at five, five fifteen, then start again at six.
Will there be a dinner buffet?
We'll eat fast. We eat fast.
So the idea would be, public comments would be in the evening, most likely, is that the idea?
We're going to try.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, the special session would be for this testimony.
Correct, if we get done with this testimony quickly, we'll get start public comment. Okay, keep thinking, I'd like the mayor of Essex Fells to come up, he has something to say, so you keep thinking, I want to get him on the record, please. Mr. Mayor, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as I, uh, mentioned, let's see, at our September seventeenth, twenty twenty five planning board hearing on this application, the board had asked me to, um, come back to discuss oval road, the legal status of oval road, the question arose whether it was a private road or public road. So I have, uh, documents that I've sent to the board secretary on October twenty ninth, Mr. Governer has them, Mr. Plucker has them, I'd just like to introduce those exhibits for the record.
Okay, so that will be, how many were there, I forget?
Uh, there's four documents with a cover email from me.
Okay, so that would be oh, thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, and thirty four. You would hand them to Gemma, she'll mark them, and then they'll go on to the agenda, and they are all, if you could just.
Describe them.
Each. Yeah, if you could, if you have a pen or something, yeah, what's oh thirty one, what's your first one? If Gemma can mark them, and then you could just describe them for the record.
The personal cover email.
All right, so what is?
This is the first, O 31 would be a letter from me to the board secretary, board attorney, and Mr. Plucker on behalf of the applicant, just describing what I'm introducing.
Okay. All right, then O 32.
Yeah. A second document is a resolution adopted by the West Orange Planning Board on November 7th, 1984, approving application of the West Essex Developers, Inc., subject to certain conditions, including several relating to Oval Road. Third document is an agreement among West Orange Essex Fells, West Essex Developers, which is a predecessor in interest of the current applicant, and the Essex Fells Country Club executed in March and April 1987, relating to the vacating a portion of Oval Road by West Orange and Essex Fells.
And then O 34?
Is an ordinance from the Borough of Essex Fells adopted August 18th, 1987 pursuant to the agreement I just mentioned, that Essex Fells ordinance vacates the portion of Oval Road in Essex Fells from Holton Lane to Essex Fells, the Essex Fells-West Orange border.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's one more.
Wait, so that would be O 35? Okay.
That's.
It's a cover letter that in there.
It's March 19, March. Yeah, so the last document is a March 9th, 2006 letter from the Essex Fells Borough Administrator to the West Orange Township Business Administrator, summarizing for West Orange in connection with a different development application by the same developer that these sections of Oval Road, specifically on the western section of Oval Road, both in West Orange and in Essex Fells, are permanently opposed to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just get one clarification, Mayor Davis? The letter you referred to, was that the letter kind of embedded? It was an email? Or was there a separate letter that was sent to the board?
It's a cover letter attachment, wasn't it?
The first document, yeah, we introduced was an email from me.
The email.
Yeah.
You said letter. I just wanted to confirm there wasn't something I didn't have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ephraim.
I I have no issue personally with working that schedule, but it may be very hard on members of the public to come question Mr. Kleinberg in that part of the meeting and then stay or will come back immediately thereafter to do the public comment.
We're trying to be expeditious with the objectors and the applicant and the board members. The holidays are com- the holidays are coming.
That's not the issue. The issue is.
Of course, it's the issue. We're trying to be reasonable with everybody.
I understand, but I'm concerned that people will be here for five hours, participate in this part of it, then leave out of necessity and then not be able to give public comment. So is there going to be another night for public comment? It's a bit much to expect people to stay from 1:00 till 9:00 or 10:00 at night just to get their right of public comments.
Well, there's two sessions. There's going to be at least an hour break in between, and we have other business to do first thing, starting at 6:00 o'clock. So that other, that other business will be about an hour or an hour and a half. So members of the public who want to go home, have dinner, do other things, there is that time. It's not straight through.
Yeah, I understand, but I would object.
Giving their time straight.
Despite, that that's fine, and so are we. That's not the issue. The issue is that the public has an absolute statutory right to comment. There is case law, for example, on objectors experts not being put very late at night. This is a sort of similar species of problem, that people could be here for five hours, four hours, doing this phase of it. Then they're expected, if they want to exercise their public comment rights, that they've been told for a year and a half are coming, they must now devote another five hours that same day. That's frankly not reasonable.
It may not be all in one night.
I'm saying, I think we need to understand there'll be another night for public comment, because otherwise it's not going to work.
If there's enough public comment, of course, there'll be.
No, but if people have to leave after the first session and can't come back that night because they have children or whatever it may be, they're going to be deprived of their right of public comment. They've been told for a year and a half, it's coming, and now they're told, you get it only if you stay for a marathon session. That's not how the law works.
He's saying if at the end of that night, it appears that there's no more public comments, someone that had already left will want to come back for another night.
Exactly. Let's just go ahead and play it for a second. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Participating long enough with Mr. Kleinberg on that afternoon.
I don't think Mr. Kleinberg is going to be testifying for four hours.
I here's the problem. The board members are public officials. If the board schedules a meeting at 1:00, and that means people give up time from work, that's the burden one assumes as a public official. However, the public normally comes at night when they're done with work, when they're done with feeding their kids, and participates. That's the point of a citizen process. Now they're told, well, if we finish in an hour at 1:00 to 2:00, public comment starts, and by 5:00, if you didn't get to go, and you have to, and you can't, and you or you can't be there in the middle of the afternoon, you'll lose your public comment. This is a problem.
We never said it was going to end if the last person.
No, what I'm saying is, let me be clear about this.
Go ahead.
If people are here, or if people cannot be here in the afternoon because they have childcare duties or work, you're public officials. You may have no choice but to be. But the public doesn't expect to give up their job to come here. That's not the way it's.
But it can come in the evening.
Just a moment. That's fine. However, if people are here in the afternoon, and the only way to get their public comment is to go through this marathon session, that's equally unfair. And I'm saying we have to build in another night to make sure people aren't deprived. They've been told for a year and a half, they're getting their public comment. Now, we can't structure it as part of a marathon session that many people may not be able to attend. It's very simple. We're going to need another night. That's all I'm saying.
I think we should see how much public comment is in the evening.
Could he address that issue?
That that has a date and a time certain for people to show up.
What were your voice views?
Just, we're asking that we be able to publish a date and time certain for public comment to begin.
It's going to begin on December 3rd.
No.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, I think before people get here and say, hey, Dave, it's not here for four hours, okay? But for the public, we would like to be in position to say on a time and date certain, this is when public comment will begin.
December 3rd.
I I just want to clarify this. If people are here for the first session.
I don't think this is fair to board members like me who cannot be here.
Right.
This is not fair to me as a board member, because I would like to be here, and I would like to hear all of the testimony, and I can't be here doing today.
And the reactions of a witness, not just the words on paper, are fundamental to evaluating their credibility. Those board members who are working and can't be here in the afternoon miss that, and there's no way to replace it. It's not appropriate to do it in the afternoon. We should continue as we've been.
Don't tell me what's appropriate and what's not.
I'm stating as a matter of law equity and my client's interest is not appropriate.
Please provide the law that states that, that the board cannot pick a time.
The board normally meets at night. People have been coming here for a year and a half.
We have been meeting at 7:30, 6:30, 6:00. The board has met at many different times.
It's at night when people are done with work or taking care of their children and there's another spouse.
And Mr. Ephraim, people have said they can't come at night. So we've had a little, we've had a little bit of everything.
That's fine. I'm just saying, I think you need to be willing to have another night.
The board.
I'm also concerned what the councilwoman just said. She's now, after a year and a half of this, we're rushing to finish it. Not that we haven't been doing the job properly all along, but now we're trying to get it done by squeezing an afternoon session in on a critical witness, and at least one or more members won't see that witness and his reaction.
I don't.
That's a problem.
I don't think that we're rushing anything after 23 meetings, sir.
Say that. I said.
You want the, you want the court reporter to read it back to you? We could do that.
I said, not that we have not been using our time well. I added that in, so please don't alter what I say. It's not appropriate.
We're rushing.
Every single session in this case has been at night. Now, we're getting to a critical witness whom you said, Mr. Bagoff, Dr. Bagoff, was an independent witness who's going to help us resolve this. And now we're doing it in the afternoon when one or more board members can't be here. Now, if this witness is so critical, as you said, why are we not doing it at the regular time?
The afternoon to 6:00.
Time now. Then it'll be a regular meeting. So you have other business to do.
It's going to be a regular meeting. We have other business. So we'll, we'll do it December 3rd at 6:00. And there'll be other business to be done, so.
At least we know, well, in that, so we're going to start this with this.
One, one person, please, one person at a time.
In that case, public comment would be unlikely on December 3rd.
I know. It would be unlikely to do public comment. We need another night. But I think that's better than having members not be here and having members of the public have to leave after many hours.
The the intent was for it to have a positive, the suggestion to have a positive impact. The the reaction was unexpected, so.
I I I didn't mean that, but I have to point out something. I have clients who, for a year and a half, have been told repeatedly, you can't say certain things because your public comment time comes. They came here last time for an announced public comment time. It couldn't happen. And so they've been told repeatedly, no, you can't say that now. Your time will come. That time has to be done in a way that avoids problems. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
And I didn't mean to be that energetic in what I said, but I have clients who expect that interest to be defended.
On December 3rd, the board has other business. We will try and get to public comment. That's the best we can do because we do have other business.
I know.
Okay, I'm just saying that.
So officially to December 3rd.
Stop, 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 stop. Not yet. Please. Enough crosstalk. The next regular planning board meeting will be held December 3rd at 6:00 in council chambers. Okay? Now, go right ahead, sir. Come up, please.
I just wanted to make sure I understand expectations that we will be able to publicly ask questions to the testimony tonight, and then later, if there is time, there'll be public comment, which most likely there won't be.
If there is time to ask questions, we will.
Okay.
And if not, we'll have another meeting to ask Mr. Kleinberg questions.
Okay.
We're going to try, because again, we have other regular business. Okay, so we're going to try and accommodate everybody for everything.
I think, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Bardoza.
Yeah, point of a clarification. So the the concern seems to be that, you know, you want a definitive date when you, when we're saying this is the beginning of public comment. If public comment begins at the end of other business, there would certainly be another date where we would specifically say, this is public comment.
I'd be wonderful. So I have a quick one. Is there any visibility to if, is there a meeting, will be a meeting? Is there any idea that might be one of those years?
We don't know. We have to arrange that with the zoning official, so we have to see when the council chambers are available and a moderator is available. So we're working on it.
Thank you very much for altering the schedule. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Stay home.
Motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes are above the nos. Thank you all very much.
So now we know our limit.